We can have silence in the chambers. We're in session for the special meeting of Glendale City Council of May 13, 2014. Can we have roll call, please?
Council members.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sunanian.
Here. May we have the report, please?
Agenda for the May 13, 2014, special public meeting of the city council is postponed on Thursday, May 8, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, what's next?
First item is Director of Economic Development regarding request from Special Olympics World Games Los Angeles 2015 to be a host town. 1A is motion authorizing participation as a designated Special Olympics World Games host town and sponsorship of a delegation of athletes.
Yes, please. Hi, Dada.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. The report before you is to discuss your consideration for our participation as a designated Special Olympics World Games team and also sponsor a delegation of athletes for the upcoming Special Olympic World Games that will be hosted in the city of Los Angeles in July of 2015. This is a very unique opportunity to participate in a worldwide event. As a host town, which is what Glendale's asked to participate as, we would be responsible for the lodging, food, and activities, as well as a practice arena for a delegation of about 100 athletes. This would be for the three-day period prior to the opening ceremony of the Special Olympics. Olympic game organizers have estimated the cost to cover the athletes' hotel, food, and lodging to be approximately $50,000. Yet, based on experience with previous games, host town organizers have indicated that over the next year, this figure is supplemented, if not fully covered by in-kind donations with community groups and community members at large. With that, I have asked Joanne Klawski, who is the Vice President of the Host Town Program, to say a few words about this opportunity, as well as why Glendale was asked to participate.
Great. Ms. Klawski?
Klawski. Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council people. The World Games are coming here in 2015. It will be the largest event, sports event, in the entire world in 2015. There will be 177 countries participating. It will be larger than the 1984 Olympics. And as part of that, we have host towns, as Ms. Sanchez has explained. There will be 100 host towns to handle 10,000 delegates from the 177 countries. Host towns will be from San Luis Obispo to San Diego and east to Palm Springs. And certainly, we'd love Glendale to be one of them. I think some of you may know Patrick McClanahan, who happens to be our CEO and President, and he lives in Glendale, so what a better place to have a host town. I would like to introduce you to one of our Special Olympic athletes, who will say a few words on our behalf. And this is Harrison.
Council members, my name's Harrison Hoffman. I live in South Pasadena, California. I've been doing Special Olympics since I was in high school, 2002. And my final memory of the Special Olympics was when I did powerlifting, went down to Venice Beach, won three gold medals in my first competition down there. And I've also lived abroad in different countries: Germany, Japan, Taiwan. I was also vied to go to the 2004 Games in Athens, Greece. I'm here today to tell you that we're proud to be here so we can help support Special Olympics, a great cause and a great organization to me, the future of our industries.
Thank you, Harrison.
Thank you, Harrison. I know one of the concerns can always be, how do you raise the money or how do you get the in-kind donations? And I have with me John Hunt, who is a member of Kiwanis, and he's also a coach with Special Olympics here locally, and asked him to say a couple words.
Thank you, Mayor Sunanian, Council members. It's a pleasure to be here today. Yeah, just to put kind of a local point on this project, I will be the incoming President of Glendale-Kiwanis. And Kiwanis and Special Olympics have a longstanding partnership, and this is an opportunity that, as a community, is something that I don't think we can afford to pass up. This will be a great opportunity for us to come together and work to support these special athletes. I'm actually a coach. We have a team from Glendale. We competed at the CV Games a couple weeks ago. We had 22 athletes on our team. And we'll also have the opportunity to take six athletes down to the Summer Invitational Games at USC at the beginning of June. And those games will be kind of a preview and a walk-through of the Summer Games next summer in 2015. So, again, I think this is a great opportunity for Glendale to be part of this program to support this great cause, and I encourage you to approve this request. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Thanks.
If anyone can fundraise, it's the Kiwanis, that's for sure. Not that Rotary and so optimists and the others can't, but what a group of hard-working volunteers and, of course, great athletes, so we're very proud to have them in our community. I was wondering what sport? Powerlifting. Makes sense. You look very, very strong.
I did 135 pounds.
Wow.
I had to go to personal best record for that. I was also down in Athens for the big games. I'm in the back of this one, but what my host did. Wendy Kamiak did meet some parties from Germany, France, Russia, and the UK.
Incredible opportunity, so glad to have you all here in Los Angeles and here in Glendale. Thank you so much. I support you.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Anyone else? Will someone move Alternative 1?
I will move the item.
Second? Great. Can we have roll call, please? By the way, Alternative 1 is for Glendale to become a host city. So, yes, roll call, please.
Council members.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sunanian.
Yes, so it's unanimous.
Thank you.
We're proud to be part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what's next?
Next item is a public hearing. Director of Community Development. This was continued from April 22, 2014, regarding proposed mixed-use development to be located at 507 through 25 West Colorado Street, located within the San Fernando Road corridor redevelopment project area. 2A is resolution certifying the final environmental impact report. 2B is motion approving Stage 1 and 2 design review, subject to comments and conditions of approval.
Okay. We're going to open public hearing.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sunanian, members of City Council. As mentioned, local developer CC Tan is requesting a Stage 1 and Stage 2 design review for a mixed-use project located at 507 through 525 West Colorado. The project's site, approximately one acre in size, is located on the north side of Colorado, west of Pacific, and east of the Interstate 5 freeway interchange, and it is located in the San Fernando Road redevelopment project area. Last June, City Council denied the Stage 1 conceptual design review for a much larger, boxier project. The current project has been presented before you in response to Council's previous comments and concerns. The current proposal is a five-story mixed-use development with approximately 18,000 square feet of medical office use and a 1,000-square-foot deli on the ground floor and four levels of residential units up above. The project also includes a subterranean parking garage with approximately, not approximately, I take that back, with the direct number of 230 parking spaces, which is 24 parking spaces more than required by code. The developer has requested and has been approved for a density bonus per SB 1818. According to code, the developer would be allowed to construct up to 86 units by right. The developer has submitted a proposal with five very low-income residential units. As such, they would be permitted a density up to 20%, which would be up to 103 units. However, this particular project is being proposed at 90 units, so they are just receiving four additional units above what density is permitted by right in the zone. A final environmental impact report was prepared for the project and submitted for your review as part of your staff report. Mr. Tony Lacaciato of Meridian is in the audience and is available to answer any questions you may have regarding the environmental impact report. Staff recommends approval of the Stage 1 and Stage 2 design review with two minor conditions as listed in the design memo. This concludes staff's brief overview of the project, and if there are no questions for staff, I would like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Greg Tan of the CC Tan Group.
Any questions?
I have a question. You probably said it, but how many units is this site zoned for without the density bonus?
By right, it is zoned for 86 units.
They're taking another four.
And they are requesting, yes, correct, they've been approved for an additional four units.
Although they're entitled to, per SB 1818, to another 20, right?
Correct. For SB 18, they'd be allowed up to 103.
Okay, there you go. Just go ahead.
So, last time, when we rejected this for being too large, how many units were there in that proposal?
Same number of units, 90 residential units. The previous proposal had 28,000 square feet of commercial uses on the ground floor, and that also included a daycare center that City Council had grave concerns regarding the traffic and circulation for the daycare center within the project's scope. So, that daycare center has been eliminated, and the commercial component has been reduced by 10,000 square feet.
And last time, when we rejected this for being too large, how many stories were proposed?
At that time, I believe it was four stories, same height, 60 feet. So, both projects have the exact same height overall of 60 feet.
Okay. I guess my question focuses more on the number of stories. So, last time, when we rejected it for being too large, there were four stories, correct?
Correct.
And now, there are five stories?
Correct.
Proposed.
Yes.
But the site plan's been significantly changed as well.
The area to the west of the site has been...
The reason that they added that story was to give relief to the neighbors in the rear, I assume, from looking at the site plan?
The architect will go into greater detail regarding the changes to the massing, but yes, the project overall has been significantly redesigned from a very donut-shaped mass that was four stories, 60 feet, all across the entire building site, to a more reconfigured project with multiple masses throughout the project, pushed back away from the single-family residential to the rear. And the overall height has been the same as for both projects, except in order to make up for the loss of overall floor area, they are going up to five stories.
But with the same height?
Same height.
So, they're making the ceiling heights smaller inside?
Yes.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. We'll have the developer's team make their presentation. There are three cards submitted by Gregory Tan, Efren Olivares, and Roden Khan. And how much time will you need in totality, the whole group?
I'd like to request 20 minutes, but we should be a little less than that.
20? Okay. Less than that, it sounds better. Go ahead.
We'll be less. All right, thank you. Thank you, honorable mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Staff. My name is Gregory Tan with CMGT, and we are the developer for this project. First, a little bit of background about my company. We are a small, family-owned company. It was started by my parents. My parents and I make up three of the four people in the entire company. This project is, it's a big deal for us. My parents have worked for 30 years to get to this point, to create their legacy project. That's why we're going to, as far as putting my father's name on this project. Also, we're local people. Not only are we from within the state, we're actually from Glendale. As you see, there's a building on the side, right next to the site. That's where our office is. We've been there for almost 20 years. Myself, I was born and raised in Glendale, lived here for over 30 years. My parents have lived in Glendale over 40 years. As you can see, we're not your stereotypical, large, out-of-state developer. That's just not who we are. Now, as far as the usage of the building, the goal is to bring in seniors, couples, and small families. That's why we're working to make the units ADA accessible. That's why we have the open landscaped areas, so people can relax with their kids. We have the small, quiet terraces. As was mentioned, there will be five units of affordable housing. The units will be distributed throughout the project. Materials and features will be identical to all the other units in the project. And we've already started working with the Housing Department to make sure that those units can be occupied as soon as this building comes online. As was also mentioned, it is a mixed-use project. The first floor will have commercial space, but these are businesses that will be providing medical services that the city of Glendale is in great need of, especially considering the loss of the medical offices on Central. As councils, I'm sure, wear, there are eye doctors, dentists, the pharmacy, that need to go somewhere. The residents of Glendale need these services, and hopefully, we'll be able to provide some here. Of course, we will be providing construction jobs on-site, as well as helping to support local manufacturers, fabricators, that will be off-site. Now, in addition to benefits to the residents, there are benefits to the city as well. The site currently has two nondescript buildings that were built in the '70s, as well as two vacant lots. There are also, there are about a dozen people working in the existing buildings. This new site will have more medical assistants, nurses, doctors. These are businesses that will be providing tax dollars to the city. This is a higher, better use of this site. As for the design of the building, as was mentioned, I came before City Council in June of last year with a different proposal. As a reminder, that is what the first floor of our project looked like. Now, obviously, we've gone through a major redesign, and that's what our first floor looks like now. So, I'll put the two side by side so we can compare them. Now, in this new design, we have done everything that City Council has asked us to do. And beyond that, we've actually done everything that we could to address all the City Council's comments, as well as the neighbors. In our previous hearing, there were comments regarding the massing of the building, about the large wall of units that were facing the residents to the north. There's a comment about having just a wall with just simple articulation, that, you know, we needed to break up the sides a little bit. Well, we actually broke up the entire building into three separate pieces to create a small village. We also rotated the pieces, which completely changes the massing. We've also added a large urban sculpture as well. There were comments about the setbacks. Well, as you can see, in addition to the large, open area in the back, we've added open areas in the front of the building as well. There was a comment about the guest parking, because our previous design didn't have guest parking. Our current design, we have all the code-required guest parking, and in addition to that, we added a drop-off zone in the front of the building, so that people who need to make a quick stop can do so without impeding traffic on Colorado Street. Now, that's a significant benefit that's not going to show up on any kind of traffic analysis calculation or anything of that fashion, but obviously, it's there, and it will be a big help. There were also comments about the elevators, that, you know, one elevator wouldn't be enough, we needed at least two. We now have three elevators in the project. And as was also mentioned, there was a comment about the childcare. Obviously, the childcare was a large part of the commercial aspect in the previous design. There was a comment because childcare, you know, results in a large flux of people at the beginning, at the end of the day, and that would, you know, may interfere with the other people in the building. Well, as you can see, we've taken the childcare out of the project. We've actually reduced the commercial space by almost 10,000 square feet. And we took most of the rest of it and converted it to medical offices, which, as I mentioned, the city is in great need of. Just to get an idea of what that effect looks like, if you look at the actual occupiable space here, that's what that is. Now, for reference, I'll put the perimeter of the site, and if you take out the open areas, the landscape, and you take that out of the picture, you get a very clear image of how huge a difference there really is in this new design. Now, in our previous hearing, in addition, we also heard comments from the neighbors. We were asked if we would have consideration for the neighbors. We have absolutely reached out to the neighbors to get their involvement. In addition to all the required notifications, we have sent letters, we have had emails, phone calls, we've actually met with the neighbors along the north and the east sides of the site on multiple occasions to address their comments and questions. And of course, we are our own neighbors to the west. There was a comment about privacy. Well, as you can see, we pulled the building back away from their homes, and we put a large, open space there. We also took out all the balconies out of the project. There was a comment about shadows. Well, in the new design, we had a shadow study done. And as you can see, December 21, worst-case scenario, we still don't have an impact on their homes.
Are those apart, can you go back for a second? Are those two large buildings behind you apartment buildings?
Those are three-story apartment buildings, yes.
And then, single-family currently on the one side?
Correct.
What's on the right side?
Another apartment building.
Or apartment buildings.
It is actually zoned for multi-use, but...
What's the space between that, your proposed building and the apartment buildings in the back? About?
It's about, I want to say it's about 50 feet, but my architect will describe that in more detail. Oh, get back to the comments. There was a comment about parking spaces. In our previous design, we had 193 parking spaces. In our new design, we have 230 parking spaces. That's 37 more parking spaces, which includes 23 guest parking, as well as an extra space for shared car parking. As you can see, obviously, we have made major changes to this project. Again, that's why I'm coming back 11 months later, so that we could do everything that we could do to address City Council's comments, as well as the neighbors. And again, we have done everything that City Council has asked us to do. Now, because of that, we actually have a better project for that, so thank you. This is a project that my parents, my family, and I believe the residents of Glendale will actually be proud of. And with that, I'd like to turn over to my architect, Efren, who will speak in more detail about the design.
Thank you, Mr. Tan. Mr. Olivares?
Good afternoon, Mayor Sunanian, Council members, and staff. My name is Efren Olivares. I am the project architect. As you all know, I'm a longtime Glendale citizen and a local architect. You may even know a couple of my projects. I restored the Good House and built the Affordable Housing Project around it. I also did the Affordable Housing Project over on San Fernando Road. So, let me say a couple of words about my philosophy of architecture. I believe in projects that adapt to the neighborhood, that deal with neighborhood items and matters and issues. Definitely want to meet building zoning codes. My building here is not requesting any special concessions from the code, and I like to address urban principles and direction from your urban studio, your planning staff. My client, the Tan family, they approached me with some very simple directions. They said, "We need you to design a building for us that meets the council vision, complies with Glendale ordinances, and addresses the comments that were made by the neighborhood at the previous presentation." The new project, main level, there are 18,000 square feet of medical offices. There are 90 units above that, 68 one-bedroom and 22 two-bedroom. Those 90 units, five are affordable housing units. As you all know, I design a lot of affordable housing. All of these units will be ADA compliant for the different people that will live in this building. And there's also a 1,000-square-foot deli at the southeast corner of the property. As our second floor, as Greg indicated, I have worked very hard with the angles and the building setbacks and the steps of the building to get them as far away as possible from the single-family homes to the north. Image of the fifth floor, you will see that there are a couple of terraces, again, mostly oriented to the southeast portion of the property. Parking, as was said before, there are two levels of parking. They're split levels. There are 230 parking spaces. We're providing guest parking, which we're not required to provide by code. We're also providing three elevators, significant open space along Colorado. This is a view from the north property. You can see all of the landscape and the open space that we've provided in reaction to the neighbors' comments back in June. This is the Colorado view. There's a drop-off area for visitors within the property and away from Colorado traffic. This was something that we decided to do on our own, simply to make Colorado a better street. As you can see, we have significant landscape along the street, and we really want to promote walkability in this neighborhood. There will be secure, long-term bicycle parking for tenants on the main parking level, and there will be five guest bicycle parking spaces on the main level of Colorado next to the deli. The main space at ground level is next to what we call in the urban sculpture. There are terraces on the fourth level on the corner, and there are a number of smaller terraces around this urban sculpture that will be used by the tenants and those who use the building. There will be an exercise room and an activity room. Let's talk about the goals of the project. We want to provide substantial open space adjacent to the existing single-family residences. This is for privacy. By accomplishing this, we have provided privacy and eliminated the effect of a building built next to their backyards. Our buildings are going to be about 50 to 60 feet back from the property line on that open space. We will provide as much privacy as possible by strategically locating windows and unit entrances. If you look at this picture and the model that you saw in front of you, we have eliminated balconies, and we have no windows oriented towards the single-family homes. So, we've ensured as much privacy as we possibly can provide. We wanted to locate the more active uses of the project along Colorado and not in proximity to single-family dwellings. And you look at the red element, which we're calling urban sculpture, it is in this corner, which is next to the gas station, and it's oriented towards Pacific and Colorado, where the activity room, the terraces, and the more active uses are located. Again, as far away from the single-family homes as possible. It was also a discussion that we had with your urban studio. They wanted to see activity happening towards that corner, so we could activate the building along Colorado. So, we've worked with urban studio to create what I think will be a beautiful corner. We will provide a pedestrian-friendly urban edge along Colorado. The sidewalk is being widened to 10 feet. We're providing trees as required by the city, and we're creating a second row of planters and trees along the property line as you enter the project. So, we wanted to provide a project that is supported by sound planning concepts and which can also be supported by the Glendale City Council. The amenities of the project. This proposed project in front of you has taken a village concept approach to addressing the various comments expressed by the City Council at the last meeting, the neighbors, and the urban studio. This is one of the main images along Colorado. This concept is a number of structures that has been enhanced by locating the various structures at angles, maximize privacy, open space where it is appropriate, and provide interesting sidelines into and out of the project. This is the long elevation. This project has been designed to provide housing for seniors, families, and young couples. The significant results are the following. The main building, as questioned by Ms. Friedman, along the single-family homes are 50 to 60 feet back from the property line, and along the east portion of the property, about 60 feet from the three-story apartment buildings. To address privacy concerns, again, we specifically located trees at the open space area next to the single-family homes, and we will be providing a privacy wall at the property line and locating windows away from the north-facing property line. More active uses, such as the activity room, roof terraces, and limited-county restaurant, have been located the southeast corner of the project. The open spaces provided in the ground floor, the terraces, will be used by the seniors and the families of this project. The building presence on Colorado Street will be set back, creating a vehicle drop-off area and providing additional green edge with planters, streets, and open spaces. I need to emphasize that the setbacks of the project have been significantly enhanced to create a much more attractive village concept. We have intentionally designed the project away from property lines beyond the city requirements in order to provide relief around the property. We are proposing a composition of structures, as you can see. The most significant aspect of the project is what we're calling the urban sculpture. This houses all of the terraces, the elevators. It is the main entrance into the project, and it's the one you see in sort of a reddish color. This is meant to be a base that wraps around the entire building, and it's going to be wrapped in a metal mesh material that will become very sculptural, something we've been working with the urban studio on for quite a while. The main facades will use staggered windows in silver finishes that contrast the colors of the building to create, hopefully, an exciting rhythmic pattern. The drought-tolerant landscape will be complementary to the colors of the building, and will be seen at all the terraces from the public... be seen at all the terraces from the public way. The urban sculpture is enhanced by the sidelines and is connected to the corner element facing Pacific on the right side of the image. The geometry, color, and mixture of modern materials is a way to provide public artwork to Glendale in an urban setting. I believe this project will be unique to Glendale, very different than a lot of the projects that have come in front of you. Our Glendale team is very proud to have the opportunity to present this unique concept to you. With that, we'll turn it over to Rodney, who will close the presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Olivares. Rodney Khan?
Thank you very much, Efren. Good afternoon, mayor, city council, city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are located here in the city of Glendale. For the past several months, we've been working with the city staff, but we've also been speaking with the adjacent property owners during the redesign of this project, not after, during. It was important to us to address each of your comments, to hear what their comments are, and then be able to incorporate as many of their comments, your comments, and our design as we could in this project. One of our highlights, it was mentioned, is the introduction of five affordable housing units at no cost to the city of Glendale. Once again, we could go up to a much greater density than we are proposing. It was mentioned we can go up to 103 units. We're proposing only 90. That's 13 units less than we are allowed. Also, we could eliminate the guest parking requirement by right. We knew that in order to be successful with this project, we needed to include guest parking, along with the shared car parking as well. We set out to design this project to address the needs that we feel are in this community. The elimination of medical office space, that was a key component to this project. We've introduced that on the ground floor. Being able to provide housing, not just to the singles or young families, but also to The project that made sense to build is what we designed and what you're reviewing here today. Finally, we know this is an important location in our city. Colorado Street, a point of entry into our city. Thus, we created something different and something unique, an urban village with a central sculpture that will enhance and upgrade this neighborhood. We are very excited about the new direction this project has taken, and as Mr. Tan pointed out in his presentation, because of your comments, our project is that much better. That concludes our team's presentation, and we are all available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Should we go to questions, or should we hear from residents?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Are these all apartments, or is it condo?
90 units will be apartments. There's no plan to make condos.
I have a couple of questions. Is the parking area planned for any electrical car charging stations?
Yes, we are planning to put electric car charging stations. We still need to, obviously, work that into the design, but that isn't the plan.
Do you have a rough estimate of how many you'll secure?
Right now, I'm looking between four and eight. Still need to work that out.
Okay, thank you. The metal mesh, what's the, what's, is it functional? Is it meant as like a trellis for climbing plants, or is it?
It actually does two things. Efren could probably state better, but actually, it does both. I'll defer to Efren.
Okay, sure.
Architectural feature.
Yeah, it does both. It actually wraps around the urban element we're calling, and then, as it comes out, it becomes a trellis at the entrance, and the idea is to have landscape grow up and up the side of the urban element.
Okay. And the, what, the range of the sizes of the units is what, in square footage?
They're between a little over 600 up to about 850.
So the largest units are 850, correct? Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to call Asatur Geyzalian, followed by Debbie Falco.
Here?
Yes. Three minutes? No, we know, we have many cards, two minutes.
Hi, my name is Asatur Geyzalian. I'm the owner of 514 and 516 Oak Street, located behind the building next to the gas station. It's a small, tiny house. The proposed development will tower over my property. This will, this will lead to loss of privacy, or will certainly impact of the peaceful enjoyment of home and garden. In addition to this loss of property, this development will severely impact the amount of sunshine coming into my house. There already is two existing apartment buildings on both sides of my property. Adding an even larger building with five stories behind my property will negatively impact my living condition greatly. I would have three apartment complexes within windows and the balconies are looking directly to my property. I'm here for, I certain will always wish you, city of Glendale, to tree, but not at the cost of those who have been here for a decade. We already saw massive development relies directly cross from the proposed site ICIS apartment homes, along with the Americana traffic is surely to the greatly impacted. The parking situation has continuously become an issue and is progressively getting impacted. It's getting worse. Access to the front freeway via Colorado will become progressively worse, not to mention the sound impact will have an entire neighborhood. Therefore, I ask the city, city of Glendale, refuse the developments such as a sensitive area that will incentively impact not only my living condition, but all those in the entire area. Glendale is one of the more desirable suburbs of the metropolitan Los, Los Angeles area, but by allowing metro pollution projects such as the, this is to be built in, redefine the city and takes away from its quintet character. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Falco? And, followed by Mark Falco.
I'm mayor and city council members. I have one comment to make.
Please state your name for the record.
Yes, I'm Debbie Falco, and my mother-in-law is a resident there on Oak Street, and she has been living there for approximately 62 years and very active in this city council. You know her well, Jean, Carol Jean Falco. She is also past president of Glendale Beautiful, and there's a lifetime award in her name given every year, and I believe that this project is not in keeping with Glendale Beautiful. It will actually detract with the amount of people, the amount of cars, and the design itself is not what I think Glendale Beautiful is all about.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Falco. Mr. Falco, followed by Gerald Pedrosa.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Mark Falco. I'm here to voice my disapproval of the proposed building at 521 West Colorado. My mother is Carol Jean Falco, and she has been living at 530 Oak Street for 62 years. She and my father bought their house in 1952, and I believe it's one of the nicest homes in the neighborhood. On June 18th, 2013, first set of plans for this property became, came before the council and were unanimously rejected for a lot of different reasons, mass and shadowing and everything else. I hold before you that plan that you saw. This is a new plan. When I saw the new plan, I thought, "This is going backwards. This is okay for the backside of a, in a place," but you folks wanted to have something looking real nice. That looks pretty plain to me. There's, ah, sorry. There's, the buildings now are three boxes, which looks like a box to me, and they don't have many distinguishing factors, but the, the lot is only 345 feet wide by a narrow depth of 125. There's just too much in that one lot. I don't understand how you can go have the same height of a building and have the same, have 90 units, or five stories, but that doesn't work for me. One of the, one of the problems that I have is with that deck, the deck that's just above the medical office. That deck, I don't know how wide it is, but, and then the, the walkways and decks of the, of the, the adjoining building on the west, but that, those places will, people will probably have tables and whatnot to, and still somewhat of a privacy issue there.
Okay. That's all I got. Okay, thank you, Mr. Falco.
Thank you.
Gerald Pedros, followed by William Kop.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I'm actually Gerald Pedro.
Tro.
It's okay. It's my spelling. And I'm actually here in support of the project. We are the contractor, working closely with the developer, and I've been working with the, Mr. Tan regarding the impact to his neighbors and doing everything we can to address any concerns they might have during construction and minimize any impact to their comfort. Alpha Construction is who I work for, and we work within the city of Glendale. We're currently working on the veteran village project on Salem, and actually, we did the construction on the other project that Efren mentioned before that was affordable housing project here in the neighborhood. We've done mostly multifamily for, I don't know, 20, 35 years. Irv Lacsonetta is the owner of Alpha Construction, and the company has been in business in California for 50 years and has a stellar reputation for the work that they do, the quality of work that they do, and in general, we have a good relationship with our fellow neighbors during construction and the cities that we work in. So, that's all I wanted to get across.
Thank you. William Kop, followed by Doris Oswald Burrell. Please state your name for the record.
William Kop. Good, okay. You know, I tossed around, I have two minutes here to pour my heart out, and I don't have a canned speech, but I just invite all of you to please, when you look at this, peel back the onion and search your, search within yourself to, to, to understand how sensitive this area is. And we've, we've been referred to a couple times as the leftover existing single-family units since they changed the zoning, and we're more than that. There's, there are faces on the four properties that lie to the north, it's in excess of 150-plus years of residency on this particular block. I don't own a business on this block, I live on this block. So it's, it's, it's something I feel really passionate about, and I'm not going to echo and be redundant about all the privacy issues. I left that in June with you, but meeting with them, have they redesigned? Yes. They've done every, they've made an effort to redesign, they've broken the building into three pieces, but we're still looking at a five-story structure. I think we're still looking at an incredibly sensitive area, where it's positioned right where the freeway entrance is. And to borrow some of, some of what was spoken in the last meeting, Mr. Weaver, the devil's in the details. When we look at that, like Mark mentioned, we have 125-foot depth, so this looks great on, on a plan, but if you really look at that lot, this is ambitious at best, you know? So I'm not going to be disrespectful at all to, to, to what they're trying to accomplish, but I think it's inappropriate. I think another thing that was mentioned, Mr. Quintero, you wanted downtown housing, you know, not, not something on the fringe like this. I think you're adding to an incredibly dense area, you know, and with some really special circumstances here. And do they have a right to build? Yes, but this is, it's monstrous. And the other thing is, they're obviously building based upon that ISIS, you know? And ISIS is a showpiece. It's absolutely award-winning. It's all over that building. Then across the street, we're going to have 90 units, 68 of which are single units. What are we courting? What are we trying to accomplish here? I'm concerned about what this, after this meeting happens, what this building becomes, because then we own it in our own backyards. I don't think this is going to be an award-winning, high-profile showpiece that, that they're, posing it to be. So I'm concerned, and ultimately, I know they came here, I'll be very brief, and they're checking boxes on everything that they need to do, but ultimately, it's up to the judgment of the council to deem if this is fit for my neighborhood, and I want it to be better. I want it to be a better neighborhood, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kop. Thank you. Doris Oswald Burrell, followed by Sonia Hakim. Please state your name for the record, two minutes.
Hi, my name is Doris Oswald Burrell. I'm new to Glendale. We moved to Glendale in August. We own that little house, 540 Oak Street, and we moved to Glendale because we wanted to live in a house. We came from Los Feliz to have a yard and all that. Now, that is in jeopardy in many ways, not just because of a big building, but I work for a contractor. This is a shadow analysis we developed, coming from the plans that were provided here to the council. In these plans, starting mid-November, for three months, there's no sun in my yard or in my neighbor's yard. I can have more copies of this, you can have that. So, what do I do with the yard when there's never sunshine? I can't grow vegetables. I mean, it's just like, why live in a house when the basics of it are not even, you know, there? I came to Glendale. What I love about Glendale is there's new and old always coming together. That's how I see it. I'm part of the utility box program from the Arts District. I propose something exactly along these lines, like Glendale has the ability to, to work together. It's a, it's a, it's a give and take. This building is not give and take. This building is there, we are just backdrop to that building. We don't even get sunshine in. I think it is, it is just crazy that if I would have tried to move there a year from today, I would never consider living in this house. I would never consider buying any of the houses on Oak Street, never, with a five-story building behind it. There's a financial impact also for the owners of the buildings on Oak Street. I would never pay the rent I have with that building behind it.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course, please.
First, welcome to Glendale. And thank you for coming.
Sorry, I'm so nervous.
Don't be nervous, don't be nervous, we're casual. And thank you for participating in the utility box art project.
Yeah, it's going to be fun.
So I, I am just curious, and I'm not trying to be argumentative or anything like that, I'm curious. So you recently, did you buy your house, did you say, or rented?
No, we're renting. We're renting, we're renting. We just moved there in August.
Okay, great. Did you know that you were backing up to a commercial zone where buildings could be built of this size?
Do I know that?
Do you know that when you rented the house?
No, I don't think there's a disclosure thing there in place for renting. I think it would have been an issue if I would have considered buying the apartment or the, the house. Do you expect that you're going to have a five-story building in a year or two years from now behind your building? I don't think anybody would ever expect that.
No.
Because, do you?
I did when I bought my house. I did look at the zoning and what was allowed.
But I didn't buy my house.
Right.
Okay, I didn't.
Right.
So I'm renting. I'm not saying I'm in the same status, but I'm just saying that it is just not an equal situation.
Okay, thanks for, thanks for the information.
I have a question before you go. Welcome to Glendale. Talking about expectations, do you expect the city council to protect your rights and protect you from a building that's going to be built and block your sunlight?
I expect to take in consideration that a yard that doesn't have sunshine for three months out of 12 months, that that should be part of a decision process, yes, because it's a yard that you use to be in and to see sunshine. And that's what I would expect, that it becomes a point in the process. I'm not saying there shouldn't be a building. I'm just saying the building is so tall that it impacts, also in that, in that sense. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
It does, thank you. Now we have Sonia Hakim, followed by Shant Daschian. Please state your name for the record, two minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is Sonia Hakim. I've lived in Glendale for 29, 25 years, and I have seen it progress, grow, and everything. Sometimes... and I have seen it progress, grow and everything. Sometimes it's been good, sometimes it has not been good. I live at 500 Oak Street. I am impacted by so many factors that, yes, my neighbors are affected as well, but mine is, goes a little bit further. I have a gasoline station behind, in front of me. I got one to the side of me, all right? They have no regard whatsoever of people resting. I had a heart attack in 2011. I couldn't even rest because the Circle K gas station decides that they want their gas station cleaned at 1:00, 2:00, or 3:00 in the morning. It goes on for three hours. Okay? We have people who walk around. They have no regard whatsoever as to the noise factor. We've got a taco stand over there. I know this woman who goes, who patronizes that business strictly by her laughter. Okay? Yes, it's sad when you can pinpoint a person who it is. Now, progress is wonderful, but if it's going to affect the residents who live there, traffic, noise, pollution, crime, because that development does, I, I've studied criminal justice, so I know that there is a correlation between development and crime. There are easily, emergency services go into our area at least three times a day, okay? Police passing by. So, if this building, these buildings are constructed, it's going to impact all of us even more so. And yes, maybe some of you live in Glendale, but unless you live in our neighborhood, you know of not of what you speak. You have to live our experience to know. So, I am, I fervently, adamantly, and vehemently oppose this project.
Okay, thank you. Shant Daschan, followed by Sandy Teft. Please, let's observe the two-minute rule because at this point, you know, we're hearing from the residents, and a lot of the arguments that are being made are similar to one another. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council members. My name is Shant Daschan. I've lived on Oak Street since 1981. I love Glendale. It is the most beautiful city. I'm opposed to this project. Already, I'm not going to give many reasons, just one reason is traffic. I don't know if we, I'm sure we all take the Freeway 5 South to go to downtown, to go to the valley. That freeway is, that entrance, it is so crowded, and it's just going to get 10 times more crowded. And we want people to come to Glendale. That's why we have the Americana. We have the Galleria. But traffic is going to be unbelievable. I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Daschan. Sandy Teft, followed by Richard Meyer or Meyer.
Hi. My name is Sandy Teft. I'm the daughter of Carol Jean Felkel. My parents moved to Oak Street two months before I was born. My mom's been there for blank, blank years, 62 years. I know that if she could, she would be standing up here right now. She would have been the first one standing here at this microphone protesting this project. She has the huge building behind her, and it would impact her privacy. And I know when the building was built across the street from where this one is proposed, the noise was so loud from the construction, we couldn't even talk to each other in the house. And I know it was in the summer. The windows were open. She doesn't have air conditioning. So, anyway, and the other, my other point is the parking on Oak Street, when I go to visit her, is so limited. There's no parking on the street anymore, and I know it's not from the residences because they all have their own driveways. And the property values are going to go down because of the view out the back is this building. So, I think that's, that's all I want to say for now, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Richard Meyer or Meyer, I apologize, followed by Dennis De Pietro.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, City Council members. My name is Richard Meyer. I'm a landscape architect with Troller Mayor Associates on, in Kenneth Village, on Kenneth Road. The office, and I'm here to speak in favor of the project. Our office was established in 1978, and we're very proud to be members of the community in Glendale. We've done many projects. We're working on behalf of the developer in this project, and we've carefully looked at the sightlines from those individual residences, and we've located trees within that back setback area in order to address many of their concerns. And we've used evergreen trees. We've used some smaller trees. We have a pergola there. And what we've tried to do is to sensitively, along with the architect, try to address these concerns so that it's the best possible project. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis De Pietro, followed by Bruce Chow.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Dennis De Pietro. I'm here as past Chair of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, speaking on behalf of the support of this project. As redesigned, it certainly has addressed the concerns that you, the City Council, have brought, brought forth last year. It responds to the, well to the neighborhood. Obviously, it's impossible to not have any negative aspects to, to develop next to a single-family area. But the Tan family has done an extraordinary job in trying to break up the massing, keep the height limit, provide for additional low, low-cost housing, and also activate the street on, on Colorado. And finally, to, to really bookend the gateway, which is the entrance to the, the shopping area for the south part of Glendale, the city of Glendale, which begins at the junction of the 5 freeway on, eastward on Colorado Street. And speaking as an architect as well, I can understand the plight of the residences around there. But again, this is not a matter of progress. It's a matter of property rights that the developer has and their ability, which is probably, is very extraordinary in wanting to see as best a project that can be put there within the limits of what the city has defined, and, and to be a good neighbor, as good steward to that neighborhood. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. De Pietro. Bruce Chow.
Mayor, Council members. My name is Bruce Chow with Kway Corporation. We did the traffic study, and there's been comments on traffic, so been asked to come up and talk about it. We've worked with Wayne Co., your city public works engineer, on this project, and looked at the trips that we developed from this project, as well as the existing uses, distributed the traffic, worked with, again, with the city on looking at the intersections of Pacific, Kennelworth, and Colorado. And what we found, there's no impacts, again, based on city code. So, I know there's going to be trips from this project, but based on city requirements, there are going to be no traffic impacts on this project. And again, it's in our city staff report and planner staff report. And again, I just want to reiterate that there is no traffic impacts based on city criteria. If you have any questions on traffic, I'll be available later on.
Thank you.
I have a question. I don't know if you can answer this. I know you probably don't know the answer. I'm sure staff does. How many units did ISIS add on Colorado? About?
I know.
That's probably a question to staff.
200? Did you, do you know how much impact we know? I know it's mostly filled, that building. Do we know what kind of impact those 200 units had across the street?
I did, I know.
Does anybody know? That would be a good thing to know. Okay, wait, 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 wait.
Yes.
No, I mean, actually, no, not because you think this or that. Has anybody, has anyone done an analysis of that?
I'm not aware of.
Okay, thanks.
So, yes.
The entry, the entry into this proposed project, you would head west on Colorado, turn right into, how about the exit? Can you make a left turn on Colorado to, to head east?
Half, half of the time, we estimated half of the time. During the PM, it's going to queue up. The driveway's about 185 feet away from Pacific, so just west of Pacific. And from our calculations, it's going to back up about 95% of the time, go back up to 201 feet.
What I meant was, when you leave, what I meant was, when you leave the project...
I see an entry.
Yes, the, the left turn coming out would be backed up from people making a left going from Colorado to North Pacific. That left turn lane's going to block the entrance.
No, no, no. I'm talking about when you leave the project itself, right? You're leaving the project. If you turn right on Colorado, you're taking the San Fernando Road, et cetera. So, there's not much of an issue there. Are you going to be allowed to turn left on Colorado and head?
East, to go eastbound on Colorado.
Yes, you are. But again, it's going to be harder when working with the city. They had concerns with that. So, we looked at another alternative.
I have concerns with that, too.
If you can't make that left out, again, you're, we're talking about the left turns coming out of the project.
Right, right.
Yes. So, we looked at an alternative. The city was concerned. Okay, what if we can't make that? We don't allow that left turn. So, we looked at analysis where people are going to go through Oak Street as well as Harvard.
See.
No, they wouldn't. They'd actually turn right on Colorado. They would go to San Fernando Road.
No, we had to make it out right. Other project going Kennelworth. We have three, three alternatives, some going Oak Street, some going Harvard, some going on each one. And based on, again, the city's criteria, when they look at streets, street segment analysis, they have a certain level of criteria. And within adding the project trips to that, again, this is if they're prevented from making a left turn out. So, again, this is an alternative analysis. So, they're forced to make that right turn out, go up Kennelworth, Oak, Harvard, and either go up Pacific, left turn up Pacific, or right turn down Pacific, and either go back to Colorado or continue to Pacific. Based on the city's criteria, there are no impacts. Again, it's in the staff report with planning and...
Which has a bigger traffic impact, the medical use or the, the private residences?
What do you mean by impact?
The number of trips generated.
It's based on, actually, let me look at the calculation.
Do you understand the question?
Yes. Who has a higher generation?
Yeah.
Right now, for an apartment, if we just look at the PM hour, it's about 0.6 trips per unit. For a medical office, it's 3.57 trips per unit. Again, this is the PM hour.
So, the medical use has a big, that's what I would have thought, just watching the traffic around the medical buildings that are on Central, which can get a lot of traffic generated.
Is there a middle turn lane there?
Yes. There's a two-way left turn lane.
So, you can pull out into that middle?
Correct.
Lane and wait till you can get over into the lane.
And ISIS, they turn both ways. I know. They are allowed to turn both ways.
Yes, Mr. Daschan.
How many daily trips are generated by the project?
1,126.
Now, you said, based on the city's criteria.
Correct.
On the city's criteria, there's no impact.
Correct.
How about based on your criteria?
Again, we follow the city's guidelines, and what the city guidelines shows on impacts, that's what we use.
You've been doing this for a while?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you have a set of criteria where you would make a recommendation as to whether it makes an impact or not?
Again, we, each city, all the cities in Southern California, they each have their own specific criteria for intersections.
Did you hear my question?
Yes.
Did you hear my question?
I know.
Do you personally, as an experienced traffic engineer, have a set of criteria where you yourself can say that this has an impact or does not have an impact?
Again, we follow the standards set by the city. We do not determine on our own impact. It's, it's the city standards.
I heard that.
That we follow.
I heard that. But I, this is, I think, a fair question to ask. Do you personally, I don't care what you follow, here's my question. Do you, as a traffic engineer with so many years of experience, have a set of criteria where you can pass judgment and create an opinion as to whether a project creates an impact?
Again, each city is different. Each city has different levels of traffic versus, like, for example, Colorado, Pacific.
I think the answer is no.
And every...
If he means no, let him say no then.
No.
If you do, if you yourself do not have a criteria, then say, "I have no criteria."
Again, we work with each city, and each city has our criteria. We are not independent in terms of looking at those impacts. We work with the city to determine what the impacts are.
Listen, I heard that. City, Glendale has a set of criteria. Pasadena has a set of criteria.
Correct.
Culver City has a set of criteria.
Correct.
Okay, here's a question, and this is, can be answered yes or no. Do you, what was your name again?
My name is Bruce Chow with Kway Corporation.
Sir, do you have a criteria and a standard that you have formulated as to whether a project does or does not create an impact on a neighborhood?
I do not.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay. Just for clarification's sake, I believe one of the, because this, this question came up previously in briefings, that one of the requirements was a no-left turn at certain times at peak hours. I believe that's one of our conditions, is it not?
Mr. Hargani?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think this is in response to the question that Councilman Quintero asked about left turn. Left turn is prohibited. Left turns outside the project are prohibited from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, which are the peak hours where that would be impossible. And council can further condition that to prohibit left turns at all times, if that's what council wishes to be.
I mean, when you say impossible, I'm sorry, what, do you mean prohibited or physically impossible?
It's prohibited. With the way that it's conditioned, left turns are prohibited from 4:00 to 6:00 PM.
And the reason for that is, there's a huge line, cars backed up on...
And the council, it's possible for the council to make the prohibition for longer hours if you so desire. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Hargani. I want to give the developers' team an opportunity to respond to whatever issues that were not responded to, because a lot of issues, I think, you did have a chance to respond. If you have nothing to say, that's fine. You do, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like, one of the responses I'd like you to give, you said you talked and worked with the neighbors. I want to know if you heard all these objections that we're hearing today at the time you were working with them. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm not part of the applicant's team. I'm part of the city's review team. Tony Locaciato with Meridian Consultants. I heard questions about shade and shadow, and I just wanted to take a minute and point out to you what information's in the EIR for you to look at and consider today. I know you've all looked at it. There is shade and shadow analysis in the aesthetics section. So, there are shade and shadow diagrams on the summer solstice, June 21st, and the winter solstice, December 21st, every hour from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Those figures are in section 4.1, 4.1-11 and 12 give you six hours during the winter. And it gives you a little more detail. Resident who came up and provided you some diagrams, there will be shading created on those four single-family homes to the north during these hours. The city has been using a criteria that if a new building shades an unshaded, solar-sensitive area, like somebody's backyard, for continuously for more than two hours, that's identified in your EIRs as a significant impact. So, when we march through and you find these exhibits in your EIR, 9:00 AM, the buildings do shade those four backyards. By 10:00 AM, because of the way they've configured the buildings, pulled that one at an angle up on Colorado, portions of those rear yards are shaded for a couple of the homes, but not all of the rear yards of all the homes. And that pattern shifts a little more at 11:00 AM, noon, 1:00 and 2:00. So, there is some shading. It's greatest first thing in the morning at 9:00, and then the rest of the day, it's partial. And you can see how much hour by hour in those diagrams. Summer, there's no shading extended with higher altitude of the sun. So, that information's in your EIR, and that's why it wasn't identified as a significant impact, but it does give you the detailed information I hope you're looking for.
Okay, thank you. So, applicant?
Yes, I did want to respond to a few of the items that I heard. First, as far as the question, in our meetings and emails and phone calls with neighbors, did we hear about these comments? And answer is no. We've heard various other comments versus, you know, construction issues, things, you know, or say, issues that may come up during construction and things of that fashion. But as far as... as far as the items brought here today, no, we have not. Just a point of clarification on the unit sizes. Yes, our units, unit sizes do start at 667. Actually, the largest units are actually 1,034 square feet.
I thought so.
So yeah, just wanted to make that point of clarification. Now, as far as the building height, yes, it is a 60-foot building, which is what the zoning allows. That is what the SFMU zone, again, that's what it allows. We are, that is our zone. The zoning of the area to the north is an R3050, which, as you're aware, is a multifamily zoning. Now, as far as our building goes, and those mentioned about the ceiling heights, well, right now, with our current design, our floor-to-floor heights are 10 feet, and we, with our design, we are anticipating nine-foot-clear ceilings. So, which is still a good size of the room. There was also, and just to reiterate those comments about the commercial space, yes, we did eliminate 10,000, or just shy of 10,000 square feet of commercial space. And just, and again, we are, we are allowed by right to go to, as was mentioned, 103 units, and we are not maximizing that because we felt there wasn't the right thing to do. So we kept it where it was, and we rearranged the building, essentially, so that we could move the mass away from the single-family homes, and which is, again, which is why the, which is why this is our current design. It was done this way, again, to provide relief from the residents, provide relief from Colorado Street. And, that's, that's the, this is what we felt was the best that we can do, and the best that can be done here. So if there's any further questions...
Any questions for Mr. Tanner, the applicant? None, thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the...
I have a question.
Oh, you do have a question.
Regarding the parking, Mr. Tanner, I have a question. So you're going to have 18,000 square feet of office, medical office space, and you've said that you've got enough parking on the, on site.
Yes.
Are you going to charge for the patients that come in to use the parking for the medical office?
No, we will not.
That's my question.
Okay. I, you know, I see that the residents want to have another go at it, but can you, can you have one speaker just speak for two minutes? Because we can't, no, we're not going to spend another half hour...
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And frankly, I have a concern. I mean, the applicant is the one with the, with the application pen, he's got the burden, he's going to have the right to speak at the end, whatever they say. In my view, that's...
Okay, so why don't we, because if you speak now, then they're going to speak again. It's, this whole thing degenerates, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, it's, they have a chance to speak.
That's, that's, that's what they, that's how it's structured. They have the right, as the city attorney just stated, they have the right to go last. So I'm going to close the public hearing, and who wants to go first?
I have a question for the city attorney.
Yeah, go ahead.
What are we here to decide? What is, they're not asking for any variances, correct?
That's correct. They...
So what is this hearing for?
They, a couple of things. The things on, the items that are on the agenda are certification of the EIR, which includes findings related to the significant impacts of the project, and includes a statement of overriding considerations if the council desires to approve those. In addition, it's to approve, give design review approval for the project.
Do we have the discretion, given that they're within the code, to force a reduction of the number of units? I know we do with the height of the building, because that's a design issue. What about the number of units?
It's an interesting question, and I'm going to start off by saying the law's not clear because of a couple of reasons. As you mentioned, the number of units, per se, complies with the code. In addition, it is an SB 1818 project. So I get concerned when the focus of the discussion is on the number of units, on the density, as opposed to what the density, we've had this discussion before, what the density produces, which is a certain mass and scale and bulk of a building.
Right, design aside.
Right.
If they could squeeze, if we told them to make the building half the size, but let's say they could still squeeze the same number of units, could we do anything about that? I mean, what does the law say about that?
Couple of things. One, I'd be concerned about that because there's a government code section which seems to suggest, when you have a certain, when you have a project that complies with your general plan standards, complies with your zoning standards, you cannot deny the project or require a reduction in density. The only thing I would say to that is, there are exceptions to that, one of those being that you can do so when the project has significant unavoidable impacts, and you're going to do that. Now, there's, the law is not 100% clear, because there's a section which says, you know, nothing relieves the agency, meaning you, of the obligation to certify an environmental document and make findings if that project is going to have significant unavoidable impacts. So a long way of saying is, it seems to me that, at the end of the day, that a project like this that has significant unavoidable impacts, there's more discretion than you would normally have with a project that did not.
So I'll just make a couple of comments first. So we really, we have some problems. We have problems that are the result of the way that our city is zoned. We have a problem when we have commercial areas that are fairly high impact, that are fairly, that allow for significant development backing up to areas that might be multifamily zoned, as this one is, but still have single-family houses. In fact, I'd say anytime you have an interaction between residences, whether they're multifamily or not, and purely non-residential commercial areas, you have a problem. The one lady described it the best, when she said, "There's two gas stations, and there's a taco stand where people are noisy." That's an impact for people who live in that neighborhood. And yet, are we saying that we never want to allow those things to be built if they're next to private residences? And how do you create that buffer? What do you put there? I mean, there's always going to be some interface area between commercial and residential, unless you say, "We're going to have a park between any street that's commercial and any street that's residential." It's always going to have these impacts, and that's a problem. It's a problem that comes up over and over again, not just in Glendale, but I'd say in just about any city, any city. I mean, I used to live in New York City, and you brought back memories of living on the second floor above a laundromat in the summer. Did I blame the laundromat for that? No, I moved into the apartment. I knew what it was like, but it was unpleasant. It was very unpleasant for me as a resident. I feel, particularly for people who have lived there before, I assume before the zoning was changed to allow the high impact, but that decision was made, and they probably argued against it then, and maybe somebody should have listened, but what do you do now? And that's the real problem, is do you say, "We're not going to allow a building to be built. We're going to make everything stay the way it is. We're going to only allow a two-story building or a one-story building." Because then you affect somebody else's property rights. You're going to allow the person maybe three, three buildings down to do it, because maybe they're behind a bigger apartment building, but not this one, and how do you deal with the growth? And that's a problem, because I completely have sympathy with all of the residents who live there. The ones in the apartment building, that's almost, it's going to be just about the same size as this building, the ones who are in the single-family houses, of course, the most, because they've got the yards, they're going to be impacted. And yet, I feel for the owner of this parcel, because they paid a certain price because of the zoning. There's a certain value there. I don't think anybody really wants the current use to remain. I've looked at those buildings, they're really not very nice. There could be something nicer there, but who's going to build it if you tell them it could only be one or two stories? So I feel for all the sides here, and I think it's a, it's a problem, it's these intersecting interests. And I'll say this, too. When they came the last time, they came with a project that we rejected, and we gave a specific set of notes to them. And I have to say, and you know, there are arguments against this project, and we're going to hear it, and we'll talk about that, but I have to say that, forgetting about things like the traffic for a second, just in terms of design, which is what we're here for, plus the EIR, in terms of design, I'm going to disagree with some of the speakers and say, "I think they've done quite a job addressing the issues of the residents." I mean, you got, you look at this, and it's not one of these things where they've tweaked a little bit, and they've pushed something back five feet, and we see that a lot. These guys turned the building around, they moved the building, they reduced the project by how many square feet? 10,000 square feet, but they were entitled to without us approving. We, you know, that's not, that's something that didn't require a variance, that was in their code. They gave more parking than they wanted, than they were required to, to address parking concerns. Because I think those people who are parking all over your neighborhood are people who are working in buildings that don't have enough parking for their employees, is my guess. I think that's probably a lot, the taco stand. You know, I'm guessing, I don't know, I don't want to say anything about the taco stand, but I'm guessing that you've got some businesses there that don't provide adequate parking for their guests and for their, so you're having this... I don't think that's an issue with this building, because unless they had been, they were going to charge for parking, where you would see that, but I think with this number of spaces, that's not an issue. But they have done a lot in terms of design. They've pushed this building very far away from those single-family residences, as far as you can and still have something on this site. Now, there's other issues to address, traffic, all of that, but give them some credit here. In terms of design, they have, is it a different architect than last time? They hired a new architect, they started over, I'm sure it was very expensive for them to do that, they have a good architect. He's done good work in this city. I know the taste isn't to everybody's, it's very contemporary, it's not a faux Spanish, you know, that kind of thing, but it's well-done for what it is. This is not, this is not schlock. This is not them hiring a contractor to design something as cheap as they could and really maximizing this for a footage, and we see that a lot. And I just want to acknowledge that, whatever happens here, they've really made an effort, and I want the residents to understand that I believe that to be the case. We have other things to talk about, traffic, this and that, and we're going to get to that, but I just wanted to put that out there, that I think everybody up here understands the residents' concerns. I understand the developers' concerns. I think that this is just a problem we see over and over again in this kind of situation, and it's, you know, it's difficult. It's really tough. It's very tough to sit up here and have to juggle their property rights, a growing city, an area that right now is really, something that's underdeveloped that I'd like to see go away, because it's not very nice what's there now. And then, you know, the values, the property values of the people who live behind, whose, you know, properties were built at a time when they didn't envision this kind of development. So it's tough, and we're, you know, we see it quite a bit. We see it in all over, you know, all over the country, not just in Glendale, but we have that issue here.
Okay, so do you support the motion approving stage one and two of the design review subject to comments and conditions of approval?
Well, I want to hear what everyone else has to say. I mean, I, I, first of all, let me say that the medical, I'm curious, and I'm not going to ask this, this is a rhetorical question, but if people would oppose this as much if it was all medical? Because, and I think that most of the time, they wouldn't. I mean, I see these kinds, people get very upset when it's new units, but not so much when it's new office space. But the irony is that the, that a medical use is a much more traffic, much more impacting use than apartment buildings. I look at ISIS across the street, I don't know what, I mean, I know it only because my father stayed there for two weeks, and I picked him up and dropped him off there, at different times during the day. And I'll, let me tell you, I never had trouble getting in and out of that building, and I never saw traffic jams. I'm sure that there are times, maybe 5:30 when people are leaving, or in the morning at 8:30, but the rest of the day, when you drive by there, there's almost never anyone coming in in that building. Go past the medical buildings on Central and look at the traffic that they generate. But people only think, "Oh, they're adding more units, it's going to cause all the traffic." Really, what causes traffic is retail followed by office. I, I, it's not a dialogue, we can't do that. So I think they've done a great job with the design, I support the design, and I'd like to talk about the EIR with you guys.
You know what, that's why I'm, you know, I was hoping that after all that verbalization of the dilemma that we all face on this dais, whether, you know, whether ultimately you had an idea whether you approved of the project or not.
Well, I think it's, they've done a really good job with the design. Let me say something about density, too. We saw this happen in the tropical apartments a few weeks ago, where they reduced the dent, they reduced the number of units, and guess what came in with pretty much the exact same design of the building? Because you know how they reduced the number of units? They made bigger units. So reducing units doesn't, and then, so if you take a one-bedroom and make it a three-bedroom, are you increasing, are you decreasing necessarily the number of people that are living there? Not necessarily. So, you know, things always aren't what they seem. People will say, "Oh, I'd much rather support a 40-unit building than a 90-unit building," but if those 40 units are all four bedrooms, you may get just as many people living there. So it's one thing if you're going to say, "Let's make the footprint of the building smaller or shorter," but to reduce the number of units where they can just make them bigger, we saw that, I mean, we saw that at the other building, it didn't make that building any smaller. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to have less people living there either.
Okay, I think Mr. Nigerian has a more certain position, okay.
I think everyone is perhaps waiting to see me, to hear me speak on this issue. It's a common issue that we've been dealing with at city council. And I think I'm going to start out by quoting the 20th-century poet from Britain, Roger Waters, when he said, "All in all, it's just another brick in the wall. This project is one more brick in the wall, and the wall is the barrier between the residents of Glendale and the quality of life that they deserve." Now, one of the most important things that we really have to focus in on, that none in the presentation really talked about. I mean, you talked about the building and the configuration and the design and the textures and the angles and all that, but let's talk about something that trumps the design, that trumps SB 18, and that is the California Environmental Quality Act. This act codifies a statewide policy of environmental protection, and all state and local agencies must give major consideration to environmental protection in regulating public and private activities, and should not approve projects for which there exist feasible and environmentally superior mitigation measures or alternatives. This is what we're talking about, folks. We're not talking about that building alone, we're talking about how it affects the entire community, and it is our duty, it is our obligation as a local agency to take that into consideration. And we should not approve this project if there is an alternative that is less severe and less impacting on the environment. So let's talk about the impact on the environment. Let's talk about the report that this project was required to prepare, called the Environmental Impact Report. Is there someone that can address some of the questions that I have? Someone, who is the most familiar person with the EIR in this room?
With this particular EIR?
Yes, this, this EIR.
It's ours. I'm sure I'm afraid to say it's me, Councilman Quintero.
Okay, now, let's, let's just try and go through this. For the most part, I think I have to make a record. I think I have to highlight many of the issues that this project faces and that the city faces by approval of this project. So if it seems a bit elementary at times, please forgive me, there's people at home watching, and there's a lot at stake here. Now, I'm sorry. Oh, I heard something. I want to highlight the impacts that this project has on the environment that cannot be avoided, and they cannot be mitigated. And you can just briefly, I'm going to, and I'm not going to hit every single one, I'm going to hit the ones that I think are important to the residents of Glendale. Let's talk about fire service. This has a significant impact on the fire service, does it not, sir?
Councilman Nigerian, that's what the ER identifies, and to be specific, what the California Environmental Quality Act looks at is physical impacts on the physical environment. So specifically, the question related to police, fire, other public services is whether there'll be such an effect on those services that new facilities have to be built that themselves will have an impact on the environment. What the city's environmental documents, as you're aware from reading many of them, are saying is that cumulatively, the amount of growth, your police and fire department is saying, they're going to hit a point where they're going to need some additional facilities to be built. Those haven't been identified yet, nobody knows where they're going to be built, what those impacts are.[1752.15] So what they are saying is, each project by itself, and we actually quantify the number of calls for additional fire and police service, at the project level, those aren't significant, it's a handful of additional calls per year. For example, for police, I think it's about, your police department estimates maybe 15 more calls per month. But when you look at cumulatively, 9,200 more residents, your police and fire department is saying eventually they'll probably need to construct some additional facilities, and that's the potential impact that's identified as a significant cumulative impact. So the impact of the project by itself, not significant, but each of these projects contributes to a potential cumulative impact.
So it goes back to my opening line, another brick in the wall. Let's talk about fire service. Same analysis that you're giving, that cumulatively, this project is going to degrade the response time and the increase of demand on our fire department. Is that correct?
The fire department says it increases the calls for service. They did not state that it would degrade their response times, but they did say that eventually the cumulative effect is going to require some more equipment and some more facilities to be built. And what CEQA focuses on is whether construction of those additional facilities will have an impact.
We had a budget study this morning, and I can tell you that aside from a remodel of Fire Station 29, there are no new fire stations in our capital improvement project budget, at least that we can project. Let's talk about the poor kids at Pacific Edison School. Pacific Edison is the elementary school that would serve this project, correct?
Yes, sir.
And as a matter of fact, at the current state, it is overcrowded. And this project would add approximately 30 new students to an already overcrowded elementary school. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
And that cannot be mitigated?
Actually, on that point, I'll start, and I'm sure your city attorney will want to chip in. This is an area where the state of California stepped in, addressed this at the state level. Development impact fees are required to be paid by all residential, commercial, and industrial projects in the state. If a school district is impacted in their facilities, then they're legally allowed to charge that impact fee. The purpose of those impact fees is to go to the district so they can build the additional classroom space they need. Again, emphasis on the physical facilities that are needed. The state law says if you pay your impact fees, your impact is mitigated under CEQA.
Yeah, I know, the state gives us a lot of rules and regulations, but for the kids in that classroom, that hot, stuffy classroom in Pacific Edison, the promise that fees have been paid and the state is going to dictate that some more facilities be built, that doesn't help them on that day. You don't have to answer that. Let's talk about recreation. Let's talk about our old friend Parks and Recreation. Now, this project is a pipeline project, is it not?
Yes, it is.
So this project is subsidized quite extensively by the taxpayers of the city of Glendale, to the extent that the parks that would be required to be built pro rata for the residents here, at least half of that, more than half, would fall upon the other residents of the city of Glendale. Because a fully burdened fee, I think, is $18,000, which we've passed already, and this current project is paying $7,000 per unit.
Correct.
So that's an impact, basically, our parks are going to get more crowded, and if the city wants to build more parks, this project isn't carrying its own weight towards the completion of that. Mr. Cott knows about that, but we'll talk about that later. Let's talk about traffic now, outside the, I'm not going to ask you if you have a criteria for impact, but I'm going to say, have you read the notice from Caltrans? Well, Caltrans indicates that they are concerned, very concerned, that the impacts to the freeway system, the 5 and the 134, may be significant by the 1,100-some daily trips that this project would generate. I'm sure you're aware of it. There's an answer by staff, but...
Well, there's also an answer, we, the city is required to prepare a written response to every written comment, and I'm sure when you went to the final EIR, you saw each comment from Caltrans numbered, and a written response provided to each of those comments. And they're, they actually commented on the ramp, queuing analysis, they asked for queuing analysis, said we don't believe it was provided, it was, so we recapped the results of the effects of this. As Mr. Chow said, when you net out the trips from the existing uses, about 1,100 daily trips, but it's about 11 more AM peak-hour trips and about 23, just about two dozen PM peak-hour trips.
So, in short, Caltrans is wrong. Their concerns are misplaced.
No, Councilman Najarian, I did not say that.
I said...
No.
You don't have to answer.
Well, I'd like to.
I'd like to, if I could, sir. No, the city, the city provides a technical...
I'm sorry, sir, when I ask a question that requires an answer, I'll let you know.
But, you know, substantively speaking, if there's an answer, I'd like to.
Well, you can follow up with that. Let's talk about sewer issues. How does this affect our sewer system? That's a question that I would appreciate an answer.
I appreciate the opportunity, Councilman Najarian. As discussed in hearing your staff report, the city collects a sewer impact fee specifically based on a sewer master plan, so the city does collect the funds necessary to upgrade sewer mains as needed. So, payment of that fee actually results in improvements being made, that mitigates the impacts of all projects that contribute wastewater to your collection system.
Okay. Let's talk about solid waste impact. Significant? Significant, the impact to our solid waste stream?
The cumulative impact is identified as significant. Each project contributes to eating up a little more of the available landfill capacity, and eventually, as I'm sure everyone's aware, new landfills someday will have to be permitted and put into service to can... So, the county of LA and city identify that as a cumulative impact over time. At this point, there's not imminent, an imminent cumulative impact. The landfills that are licensed and have permitted capacity are not running out of capacity in the near term, but over time, landfills fill up, and that's the impact that's identified.
Okay. Let's talk about water, because I read something that really concerned me. Joel, let's see, where do we, where's the water section?
Water section is 4.9-1.
Says that there, that we're going to have a surplus of water, and that even with this project, the city would have enough water to meet all the citywide demand under normal and drought conditions. But we're telling our people to cut back on the water, so how does this jibe with what we're...
It actually does. We have a state law, I believe you'll actually like, which is, you know, each public water provider is required to prepare an urban water management plan, to do 20-year forecasts, and to update that plan every five years. And the urban water management plan has to be based on growth projections and look at the city's ability to meet current and projected water demands for all your retail customers, including planned uses, and then also to look at three different scenarios, which is, can you meet it in a normal rainfall-water-delivery year, since in a lot of cases, what we're talking about is the ability, of course, for the state water project to meet its deliveries to metropolitan water, who then is delivering to a lot of the retailers. Then, second, can the water retailer serve it in a single drought year? And third, can that water retailer meet those projected demands in a multiple drought year? We're in a multiple drought year. What's in your urban water management plan, most other agencies is, for those single drought year and multiple drought year, there are identified conservation programs in there. In other words, your urban water management plan says, we're going to have multi-year droughts, when we have those multi-year droughts, and it's on the front page of the LA Times, so it's really in the front of all our minds. I'm in a neighborhood where we've been asked not to wash our cars and do a lot of other things right now, that those temporary reductions during multiple drought years are actually built into those projections, and that's why your urban water management plan says the city will have enough water to meet our projected demands in normal year, single drought year, and multiple drought years. So it's not a conflict, it's actually part of the program to make it through these multiple drought year periods.
I mean, am I doing a disservice to my resident, my constituents, when I say, let's cut back during a drought year?
No, you're doing exactly what your urban water management plan asks the city to do.
But we'll cut back, so this project has enough water to go forward.
Well, everybody cuts, no, I wouldn't draw that one-to-one distinction, because what your urban water management plan, based on growth projections for your general plan, says you can meet this need, this project, in a normal year, in a single drought year, in a multiple drought year, along with all the other projects you've approved and all the other uses in the city. And that's based on citywide projections, and that's a 20-year projection, so it's looking at how much water is the city entitled to get and going to get over a 20-year forecast period in every use. So, no, you're implementing your urban water management plan.
Okay. I have a question for Hassan. One of the alternatives, the environmentally superior alternative, first is no project, correct? But then, the second option is a 50% reduction...
Okay.
...in density. Is that correct? Am I understanding that?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then you talk about, again, profit. The land isn't going to be profitable, or, but there's been no discussion either in the books or out here as to how much the land is worth when the owners bought the land. So are you saying that a 50% reduction of density would make this project infeasible?
That is what, we get that information from the developer, and then we rely on that information, then we run it by the environmental consultant. So, that is, that is what we have been said, told, and we take that. We don't necessarily question that. Based on the land value and the way that we see projects, we know that a certain density, less than a certain density, at some point, the projects don't pencil out, based on the market that's happening out there.
Do you know when the owners bought the land? I mean, this all begs the question as to how much is their investment in the land, because if it's $50,000, it's a different analysis than if it's $2 million.
But we don't know when the owner purchased the land.
Nor do we know what kind of obligations they have on the land, it's an entirely private transaction.
So then, we shouldn't make any comment as to whether it's infeasible or not?
Would you just go by the representation?
So, I think, the big picture here is that this is another brick in the wall, and this brick affects the community and the environment of the city of Glendale. We really need to be concerned about the environment, and I'm very happy, I forgot to announce this, that next to me, receiving the Environmental Champion Award, Smith Weiss of the LA Conservation Voters, is our very own colleague Laura Friedman. And they recognize individuals in public service whose efforts in protecting the environment shine. So I'm going to ask my colleague to shine with me and to protect the environment and to at least have this project down to a 50% level, because the environment is a very serious concern with all these unmitigatable impacts. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
I'll try to be shorter. As Mr. Friedman has said, we turned this project down a year ago unanimously, and told them, go back, get a new architect, and start over again. We gave them all the comments that we heard here, complaints, et cetera. As far as I can tell, they've been addressed. I might not like olive color on the walls, I just assumed had cream and red, kind of reminds me of USC colors, but that's not my call, I'm just looking at pieces here. I counted 16 medical offices. Wow, we're really overloading the area by having 16 doctors working in those spaces. We've taken away the childcare, and boy, I've been around my grandkids' childcare facilities and their mob scenes. So taking that away is a big help. Plus, young kids, I find out, have a passion to scream loudly. That's all been eliminated. As far as I know, doctors usually don't scream, it's the patients that scream. There's a lot of landscaping. I think that the setback from the single family has been met. There's going to be a lot of shrubbery and trees there that will do that job. They put in a restaurant, I don't think Isis has a restaurant, so we will have a small restaurant there, which I think is good. As far as turning in and out, it'll depend if you're dropping a patient off and you're heading down the freeway, or if you're not. That's, that's up to the person coming out, and maybe that person will say, well, I'm just going to go down to San Fernando Road and cut up to the 134 freeway and go east if I want to. It's overparked, which is good, no variances, nothing being asked for. So I'm, I'm happy with the project. I'm disappointed that I'm hearing from neighbors today, for the first time, I've got no emails, no letters, no phone calls of objection, until I sit down here on the dais and I have a stack full of complaints against the project. That is unfair to the applicant, to the staff, and to us, to dump this on us, because I heard no complaints. You worked with the neighbors, and you have the gall to come down here today and tell us you all object. How are we supposed to react to that? As far as CEQA, I think I know it better than just about everybody in this room. When I started with environmental documents, it was NEPA. CEQA didn't exist. As I've said many times, my first NEPA document was 14 pages, including the table of contents and the pictures. And look where it's grown to. Now, you tell me how the heck we could have put the Americana in without adequate sewers, storm drains, water delivery, fire, everything. Look at it, compared to this, give me a break. Any project that is going to break the bank by it coming in, if the capacity has been met, they're going to have to make the improvements to put their project in. Since that isn't happening here, then there is no need for this project to do so. Now, you can talk about the traffic on Brand, Colorado trying to get on the freeway, and the queuing back onto our surface streets rather than onto the on-ramps. Well, that is Caltrans problems, because their freeways are not designed to handle the traffic loading of 2015, or 14, or whatever. That's their problem. To say they don't like it, they want local government, they want cities to absorb the problem. Now, where are you going to put a longer queue lane? You can't. The freeways are underdesigned, and they got to figure out ways to put new traffic lanes in. So I don't buy any of that either. This project is okay. They've done everything we asked of them, and no complaints up till today. So you can talk all you want, but 16 doctors in there aren't going to create a monster impact on the neighborhood. In fact, I imagine some of the doctors at Memorial might have their offices here, maybe they'll even live above. Who knows? But there's a lot less impact on a community. And remember, Colorado is kind of a major street in this town, you expect noise, and gee, what have you got? You've got a, what, is it 300-and-some length on San, on Colorado? Is that 300-and-some? Guess what? You've got a beautiful sound wall. If you're a resident behind it, you're not going to hear any noise from Colorado, because you've got a five-story building shutting it all off. It might have shadows in the winter, but you're going to have a quiet neighborhood compared to the one story you have there now. That's the best guess. I don't know, I'm not living in that neck of the woods, so I don't know. But I think overall, they've done everything, and I vote for it.
Thank you. Before we go to Mr. Quintero, I do want to apologize to any staff and any, anyone who's here on item number four, the public hearing on the zoning, rezoning. We're just not going to have time for that, so that's going to get kicked to June 3rd. No, I'm still hoping that we'll have time for Agenda Item 3, but I'm not sure how it's going to go. So, Mr. Quintero?
Okay, well, I want to thank the neighbors for coming today. I was a neighbor of this neighborhood. In 1977, I opened an office on the corner of Oak and Pacific. It was my first office here in the city of Glendale. It was a beautiful residential neighborhood, all single-family homes, with the exception of a couple of garden-style apartments, some of which are still around, not many. But it was all very low-keyed, single-story, the garden apartments were two stories. The Galleria more or less just opened, and over the next few years, I saw a neighborhood destroyed. That's the best way to describe it. From my office, I saw an entire row, Oak Street between Pacific and the Galleria between Pacific and the fire station, an entire row of craftsmen-style homes, just older, beautiful, beautiful homes, not that many two stories, mostly one stories. Completely gone in its place was this big box condominium that's still there to this day. Then on the left-hand side, later on, Home Depot came in. So over a period of time, this single-family neighborhood pretty much ceased to exist. There's still a couple of streets where you'll find... There are still a couple of streets where you'll find an occasional house, but for the most part, it's apartments and condos. And then the four homes in question here on Oak Street are still there. So I think there has been a loss of value, but at this point, the value is in multifamily housing. So when the owners of these single-family homes sell someday, I have a feeling that they'll be selling to multifamily developers, whether they're building condos or building apartments. But this neighborhood has absolutely changed. And although 1977 seems like just the other day, it was really a long time ago, most of the development there took place in the 80s. When I look at this project, I really look at it as I come in from Colorado, as I get off to 5 and come into Colorado, look to the left, and a couple of nondescript office buildings, and then just a total agglomeration of enterprises. Auto repair, the 7-Eleven on the corner, two gas stations, a taco stand that's been a hamburger stand that's been through multiple sort of businesses. And then a little bit of office, like I say, the Home Depot loading section is there on Colorado. And then this ISIS project, which quite frankly, I was very surprised that they had the success that they had with filling that building. I was convinced that it was going to take them a long time to get tenants in there, but I was wrong. They succeeded and seems to be doing fine. The project has changed. I think the site planning is quite different. I think it does somewhat respects the single-family homes. Those four single-family homes, I think they're in much better shape than they would have been had the original project been built. And certainly from Colorado, it looks much, much better. Now, in terms of the projects, I would like to make it a condition that there be landscaping provided by the developer for those single-family homes. That adjacent to the project, working with the four homeowners, that the developer develop a landscaping plan and with whatever parameters we put in, but that those four homes are landscaped so they don't have to look at the parking structure, at the wall, whatever it is they're going to be looking for.
Mr. Quintero, you mean on the resident?
On their side, on their property, right. On their property that they address. We can do that. There's no question about it. The second thing is, the architect, the renowned architect that has done wonderful projects all over Southern California, this particular case, I don't like that green at all. I think that's going to be a bad idea. A bad idea as you drive in. ISIS somewhat blends in and so forth. When you drive in and you look at that green color, I just can't handle that. I think it's going to be a lot better in sort of, I don't know what, a silver, a lighter blue. No, I mean, I'm thinking blue because I'm thinking on the single-family home side, at least if you're looking at something other than green, if you're looking at some kind of light blue or a silver or something, you're kind of looking at the sky rather than this the other color that wraps around. I'm not particularly happy with it either, but I can sort of swallow that a little better than I can the green. The green, to me, has to go. Then in terms of Colorado, the in and out, I think four to six right turn only is a good idea, and maybe in the morning also. I'm just afraid there is going to be some, we're going to have traffic issues with wrecks and just people. I just like the idea of turning right. It does have the potential to impact Oak and Kennelworth and some of those other streets because people will turn right and then go into the single-family neighborhood there and multifamily neighborhood. But there are speed bumps, and so I do think it would be a good idea to have that right turn in the afternoon, four to six, and maybe even in the morning, but I'll defer to the traffic engineers. So all in all, I think it's a step up for this area, for the entranceway to the city. It absolutely impacts the four single-family homes. There's no way around that, but I think we have to be responsible to these property owners. I mean, they're entitled to build, and I think it's just a question of trying to mitigate the damage that we're doing to the current owners of those four homes, whom I'm sure do not want to sell and do not want to build multifamily, you know, don't want to sell to developers, in other words. But anyway, I think that is pretty much it in terms of my, well, one more thing. I would not be adverse to, it's an awful lot of one-bedrooms, and there's 22 two-bedrooms, so I certainly wouldn't be adverse to turning some one-bedrooms into two-bedrooms because I think some people will rent a two-bedroom and have one bedroom as an office, as a den, as, you know, not necessarily occupy both for bedroom purposes. So going from 68 one-bedrooms to less, I would support that.
Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just with respect to the suggested condition by Councilmember Quintero, if ultimately the project is moving forward and then there's going to be a motion to approve it, my only suggestion on that particular condition related to landscaping is that it has to be something to the effect that the applicant has to take good faith and reasonable efforts to work with the neighbors on that. It can't be a mandate if they can't get agreement with the neighbors.
I'm not talking about a jacuzzi. I'm just talking about something up against the wall, the trees, something to really block the...
Okay. And I was, something in the nature of some sort of landscaping buffer.
Go ahead.
The applicant may work with the neighbors and to, and agree on one rule of screening trees that could be planted if the neighbors wish so. Because we understand that some of the neighbors did not want that kind of offer from them because of the paving that they have in the backyard.
Right, okay, but paving, I mean, screening trees is fine, but if it's this high, then another level down, something that graduates into a nice...
Screening landscaping.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Friedman?
Not to drag it out, I know it's getting late, I just want to make three comments. First, regard to the color, I would support that as a recommendation, but sometimes lighter colors make large buildings look bigger, in my experience, than darker colors. I mean, I have a small house and small rooms. We made the rooms very dark colors, and it actually makes things look bigger than when it had been painted all white when we bought it. So just, I would just make that a consideration. And also, it's very hard to tell what the colors are really going to be based on the renderings. Usually they print off. Now, since Mr. Najarian mentioned my name, I guess as some sort of shaming, compulsion, pressure, I want to just explain, just make a quick comment that, well, thank you, I appreciate the acknowledgement, that one of the reasons that I was given this award was because of my support of what's called smart growth. And some people don't realize what that actually means in terms of, it's sort of as a brand. That was a phrase that I believe was developed and passed by an architect in Pasadena, and it's been used interchangeably by some people with slow growth, and that's actually not what it was meant as. What smart growth really means is assuming that you're going to have a certain amount of growth in a region, and we're going to have growth in Southern California whether we build apartments or we don't. Those people are moving here. They're not coming from Illinois and saying, "I'm moving because Glendale's putting in 3,000 units, and I hear that, you know, they're for sale." They're going to move here and find a place to live. So the idea behind smart growth is to absorb that growth in the places that are most likely to be able to absorb it, that have the least impacts, and that have the largest job centers. So it actually means trying to make your sort of built-out urban areas more dense, but leaving your, to attempt to leave your open space alone. If we don't build these units, the idea, someone will, because those people are moving here. Where are they going to build? They're going to build in the New Hall Pass. They're going to build in cities that are underdeveloped, maybe Victorville, or spreading out, and we see that sprawl. And you talk about water usage, that's a regional issue. It's a Southern California issue. In fact, it's a statewide issue. But in Southern California, we get most of our water from the Metropolitan Water District that delivers water to all of Southern California. And I can tell you, you really want to strain that resource? Go and build new suburbs out in the desert, single-family homes, where 80% of the water is used on landscaping. The least amount of impact is to build apartment buildings because they use the least amount of water. Here's another fact. In the last 10 years, Los Angeles has expanded by several million people. You know how much more water we use than we did 10 years ago? None. That's how good of a job we have done conserving and how well we build projects now, new projects, that they use a lot less water. And I guarantee you, if you live in a single-family house, you probably use the same amount of water as many of these units will use. So in terms of water resources, it's not so simple as to say if we don't build an apartment building, we're going to have less water. The truth is, if we stop people from moving here, stop people from having a lot of kids, that will help. But if you really want to strain your water supply, don't build those apartments. Let them build single-family houses wherever. That's what's really going to strain the water system. One other little fact, you know what uses 70 to 80% of the water in this state? You think it's people? Well, kind of indirectly, it's agriculture. That's what uses the most amount of water. I mean, we all want to eat, so I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but when we think of who's using water and who's wasting water, we tend to sort of think, "Oh, it's our neighbors." The biggest users are agriculture, and we've managed to grow without increasing the amount of water we're using, which is a credit to everyone who lives in Southern California who's been conserving, because we've been able to do that. So I wanted to clarify what smart growth actually means in terms of it being a brand and why, as an environmentalist, if you're going to have growth, I think you want to have it in your built-out urban areas. I want to see our open space in Southern California stay open space. That's extremely important to me. I want to make sure that in Glendale, we're not building up in our open space in our hillsides, that we don't have that kind of sprawl, because that's a terrible impact to have. Would I like to see less growth overall in the area? Yes. Personally, I would like to see those people not moving here from all those other places and us expanding. That has to do with overpopulation. It has to do with a lot of very, very big issues that we all should be concerned about. But the answer to that is to not, I think, to say, "Let's not absorb some of that growth in our city," maybe not the right answer in terms of resource management.
So with respect to this specific project?
I'm going to support the project. One other comment. We keep having this issue. People in this community are very concerned about growth, and they have a right to be concerned about growth. We cannot, I think, handle that by looking at the design on projects that have a right to be built at a certain level. If we're going to really, if we're really interested in tackling that, and Mr. Najarian has said this before, we should look at what the zoning is in those areas, because it's not fair to property owners to say, "You can build X number of units," and then we're going to kind of get rid of them by going through the design review process, which is not what it was designed, that's not what that was created for. And Mr. Garcia said, "We are in shaky legal ground if we start telling people that they have to build less number of units if it does not impact the design of their building." That's something we should deal with in terms of the overall zoning in these areas. That's the proper way to do it. It's not proper to be doing that project by project as each project comes in. I think that, you know, people need to understand that a project like this, they are coming in with a proposal that is less number of units than they're allowed to have by law. So they've already sort of done that. We're looking at the design here, and people may disagree, they may not like the design, and I get that, and that's fair. You know, you may think one thing about it, I may think something else, but we cannot keep having this discussion on every project that comes in at what they're entitled to build and then have people say, "We don't want that to be built that way." It's not fair to anybody. It's not fair to the developer, it's not fair to us, it's not fair to the community. If we want to have a discussion about having slower, less growth, let's have that discussion.
You have a comment?
I want to apologize to Ms. Friedman if I in any way besmirched her reputation. I do agree with the last thing you said, and the only way we can do that is by creating a moratorium, getting the studies done, and then implementing the new zoning.
Well, I think what we can do, we can start out by agendizing that issue. I mean, it's a good thing, it's a healthy thing to have discussions about these types of issues. It's a good thing to give notice to anyone who wants to come to Glendale and develop here or not develop here or to live here, to know what to expect. I think that's the proper constructive way of doing it. And again, these zoning, these zones were developed, and DSP was developed before I got on, so I had really no input in it. But they're there, and we've historically made commitments to them. We've made a commitment to embodying or implementing a certain vision that we had for downtown, for central Glendale. I think that's what's happening here. But I'm happy to, I'll support it.
Right, I think we should. If you would like to put that on, because I'm getting tired of fighting these project by project, and the DSP that I voted for six years ago is not the DSP that I'm looking at today. And I was the fourth vote that made it pass. So let's put it on the agenda and talk.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Mr. City Manager?
What, may I ask, are we actually putting on there a discussion of a moratorium?
So we're looking at the DSP.
He's talking about a moratorium question.
No, we're not looking at moratorium. No, no.
Well, it's something that can come up as we review the zoning.
We're going to review the zoning and specifically with DSP. Let's have a discussion about that, but not moratorium. We're not, moratorium is not on the agenda. It may, you're right, it may, if somehow the consensus on the dais is that we should look at moratorium as a result of that discussion, fine, but not as of yet. Now, folks, it's 5:20, and we have an entire agenda item, which is...
Do you have comments on this project?
Yeah, I do have comments. I really, I'm going to keep them brief because of time constraint. I support this project. I do because this developer, this applicant has gone, has done everything that a year ago we required them to do, and they're not asking for any shortcuts. They're not asking for any participation by the city in terms of any subsidization, anything. Architecturally, I like the building. I think it's nice. I think, again, it's a gateway street, that portion of Colorado. I think it's a very creative architectural design. So I disagree with the residents who thought that it's an ugly building. Guest parking not required, yet they've included it. The units are such that families can live in. By the way, I want to get this on the record. We don't not want people to have children. I think, I just want to make sure. We want people to have children. We want people to have family. We want families and children to live in Glendale. Let's get that on the record. And, you know, they're even providing low-income housing. So, you know, I don't want to go on, I don't want to regurgitate everything that my colleagues said here. So if anyone will move the item...
Now, Mr. Quintero, you want to...
I'll move, well, I'll move 2A, which is the EIR.
Which is the EIR. Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Harrisononian?
Yes. Next.
Okay, in terms of 2B, I'll move the, moving stage one and stage two design review, but I will include the condition on the landscaping. And I am absolutely, you know, I'm not going for that green color, so I don't want...
You're going to make the decision, you want staff to look at it?
Oh, the staff, it's fine with the staff. I don't need to.
I think the staff already has that as one of the mitigation measures in there.
Yeah, something in a light blue or silver.
UCLA, huh?
And...
It's because your wife works at UCLA.
And the only, no, even that's a turnoff. Then the only, in terms of also that right turn, left turn, I don't want to make that a condition because I think that would be up to the traffic engineers, but man, I sure encourage that. I just think we're going to have some real issues. It's different, you know, in the morning than the afternoon, but there's still a lot of potential for the left turn.
Staff can analyze it.
I'll second it.
And just, again, just on that one condition related to...
Restricted 4-6 in the afternoon, and then in the mornings, I don't know what, 8 to 10.
Right, but you're just recommending, you're suggesting the staff look at that as a measure, but not as a condition on the project.
Can they look at it after the project is occupied, reevaluated, and make changes if it's necessary as well? I mean, like, let's say they don't condition it in the morning, but then in a year, they think it's a problem. I mean, can they look at it to be sure it's not a problem and then change it based on that?
Apparently, our practice is looking at it about six months after it's open, see how it's operating it.
Yeah.
Or you can also condition it so that, to have staff look at the condition six months after it's open and make that change if it needs.
And thereafter, we can keep revisiting that issue, right?
And may I suggest six months or when it's at least half-occupied? If it's sitting there empty, you're not going to see any impact.
I mean, is there legally anything precluding us from revisiting that issue?
Not for the right of way, no. We can always look at that.
So do we have a motion?
Yeah, I agree. Second.
And also, I'm sorry, before the vote on... And also, I'm sorry, before the, it's voted on, I just, and for the record, the motion regarding the landscape buffer, it'll be an effort for the applicant to take commercially reasonable and good faith efforts to provide a, a tree or landscaping buffer between the property, their, their home, those four single-family properties and the project.
Right, but not tree or, tree and.
Oh, tree and, correct.
If the resident doesn't want the tree, that's fine. Maybe they just want some bushes, landscaping to soften the concrete wall.
The color, we're saying not the current shade of green, not something too jarring, something that we think will-
Staff will work it out.
Okay.
Okay, I, I made the motion.
You second it.
Can we have roll call, please?
Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Njarion?
No.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Harrison Anian?
Yes. Next item?
This item is a public hearing, Director of Community Development, regarding proposed 27-unit multifamily residential project to be located at 619 through 27 South Pacific Avenue. 3A is resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration. 3B is a motion approving Stage 1 and 2 Design Review, subject to comments and conditions of approval. C is a motion approving a conditional use permit based on bindings and subject to comments and conditions of approval.
Mr. Friedman?
How many cards do you have on this?
Just, okay, let's just give, give it one second.
Home ownership.
I don't even look at the design anymore.
Okay.
Hey, Harrison Anian, council members. The entitlements before you are Stage 1 and Stage 2 combined Design Review and a conditional use permit for a new multifamily residential project at 619 through 617, 627 South Pacific Avenue. The lot is 100 feet wide, 150 feet deep. It's an interior lot on the west side of Pacific, just north of San Fernando Road. It's located in the IMUR zone, and you'll notice that there is an image, an aerial image on the screen, which highlights not only the zoning for the entire block faces being IMUR, but also includes an aerial image showing the, the lot in red. And previously, there was a single-family residential structure that has since been demolished, so the lot is completely vacant.
Could I stop you there? Did you, you have a point or anything? How many of the surrounding buildings are already apartments? There's a lot of them, right? I drove that. There's apartments across the street, and apartments up the street, and apartments around the corner. So, this isn't breaking the mold in the single-family residential zone, is it? Right?
No. The proposed project is a 27-unit multifamily residential project, condominiums, homeownership. It is a mix of two- and three-bedroom units, two two-bedrooms, and 25 three-bedroom units. The two bedrooms are over 1,000 square feet, and the three bedrooms range from 1,200 to 1,800 square feet in size. Project includes two levels of subterranean garage with 70 onsite parking spaces, as well as individual amenities such as outdoor spaces, gyms, bike storage facilities, et cetera. The project requires a conditional use permit for having residential use in the IMUR zone. Detailed findings were included in your staff report, staff report in support of the conditional use permit. Staff prepared and circulated a negative declaration, determined that there were no environmental impacts, and that environmental, that negative declaration is before you for adoption this evening as well. Staff recommends adoption of the negative declaration, approval of the Stage 1 and Stage 2 Design Review, and the conditional use permit. That concludes staff's very brief presentation and overview. If there are no questions for staff, I would like to turn the presentation over to Mr. John Poindexter for greater detail and a design walkthrough.
Any questions? No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Villia, and good afternoon. Do we have the PowerPoint?
First off, again, my name is John Poindexter. I'm a principal in the architectural firm
of Vial Texture. With me here today is the other principal in the firm, Cameron Araya, and the landscape architect for the project, Stephen Armini. Additionally, representatives of the project owner are also here. All of us are available at the end of our presentation to answer any questions that the council may have. First, you know, I want to thank the council and staff for their consideration of our project. This project, as Villia said, is a 27-unit project. The city staff has been very helpful in terms of working with us to come up with a project that had, that meets this design. Early on, the project has, was submitted very differently. Working with city staff and working with the project applicant and the owner, we have come up with a project that is substantially different than originally submitted. As indicated by Villia, the project is five levels, 27 units. Residential condominium is over two levels of subterranean parking. The building height at the main parapet is 55 feet, and the, this compares with a maximal variable height in this area of 75 feet. The residential density would allow 34 units. The project that is proposed is 27 units. The project location is at the southern end of Pacific Avenue, as it transitions into San Fernando Road. The location is one block south of Pacific Park. The area context is poised of low and medium-scale residential institutional buildings on San Fernando Road, and it transitions to residential north of the project, and of course, residential to the east of the Pacific Avenue. One of the immediate adjacent neighbors is the LA County Building, which is approximately 55 feet high. The site is currently vacant. There was a single-family house that was demolished a couple of years ago by the current owner. Now, the design philosophy that was undertaken by the owner was to provide homeownership opportunities primarily for first-time buyers. In an area that's close to and away of community facilities, employment, and paramount in their mind, was that the project needed to provide an attractive setting with ready access to communal spaces and transportation opportunities. And, and they emphasized the need to be imaginative in terms of transportation opportunities. Early meetings with planning staff expressed strong concerns regarding urban design and public recreation, as well as impact issues that were extremely helpful in guiding the project to the current design. The, between the owner's prerequisites and planning staff's concerns, we have gone through 24 different iterations of this project, very different, before we came up with this design, which is a result of trying to mesh and compromise all of those concerns. Earlier schemes were either too dense, too tall, lacked resident amenities, or adversely impacted adjacent areas, or proposed what were unsupportable modifications to development standards. We believe that the final product is successfully addressing all concerns, and will result in a project that will be of significant plight, not only to the owners of this condominiums, but also to the community and the city of Glendale. To explain the design, first off, need to mention that the project does have two subterranean levels of parking. One of the issues, as we've seen in early discussion, was visibility of the site and the view quarters. This shows the view of the project from northbound on San Fernando Road. The site is also highly visible from southbound on Pacific Avenue. In addition, the upper levels of the project site have views to the west, towards the Griffith and Los Feliz areas, and views to the north, to the Virguca Mountains. As I mentioned, the project has these two subterranean levels. This is the first podium residential level. Units are arranged in a U shape around a central landscape plaza. That courtyard will have opportunities for outdoor recreational activities like barbecue, casual seating, communal gatherings, as well as a significant water feature. The upper levels will have six units each, also arranged around that courtyard, and as Villia indicated, the units will range in size from 1,200 square feet to 1,800 square feet. On Level 4, in addition to five units arranged around the courtyard, at the northeast corner of the site, there is a common landscaped area with a trellis, and that is adjacent to an exercise room for the building occupants. This provides an additional recreational opportunity for the building occupants, as well as additional exercise opportunity for them. And, this is at the fourth level of the project, and it provides more articulation of the building facade en masse, as you'll see when I show the elevation. This is a view of the project looking from southbound on Pacific, and as you see, this fourth-level landscaped area provides a significant reduction in the mass on the north side of the project, provides recreational opportunities for the, for the residents, and provides for articulation of the building facade. We were legitimately concerned regarding the impact that the project en masse has. We adjusted that fourth level for that reason. We were also concerned about providing a significant focal point for the project. This tower element is composed of prefinished metal panels and zinc, and a variety of, of colors. This provides for a focal point as one sees the project coming north on San Fernando Road, or also as one sees the project coming westbound on Maple Street. And it takes advantage of the high visibility of the project. I mentioned that the project was arranged around a central courtyard. This is a view of that central courtyard. As you see, it includes landscaped areas, seating areas, and mature trees. We, this is on a concrete deck, and we are raising the planter areas up three feet so that we can plant mature trees at the beginning of the project, as well as shrubs and ground covers. And it also has a water element. This is that same courtyard facing towards the south, showing the water element, and also showing an adjacent green screen, which provides for not only additional landscape area, but the, because of the U shape, the quarters are a single-load of quarters, and this green screen provides an outdoor screen to screen the quarter from the courtyard. Regarding the materials that are selected for the project, there are primarily four main materials, not only stucco, but also prefinished metal panels, this is an example of that. The fiber cement panels around certain elements, this is an example of that, and a major green screen, which is in the middle of a courtyard. As far as lining is concerned, most of the area linings will be low-scale perimeter lights shining into the areas, or downlights over the individual balconies or private outdoor areas. This is an example of the project lit up at night. As you'll see, the main facade along the street elevation has some uplights that are in planters, but most of the rest of the lighting is low-scale in the landscaped areas, except where you have major balcony areas where downlights will illuminate those balcony areas. This is very side view of the project again. And, and with that said, that concludes most of the architectural presentation. What I'd like to do now is invite Stephen Armini, who's the landscape architect, to come up and give you a brief overview of the landscape concept.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Stephen Armini. I'm a landscape architect. Was retained to design the project. Almost all of the landscaping, except for the street trees, is on structure on the top of the parking structure. And the planting will be in planters, both built-in, and some of the other planters on the left-hand side are actually individual planters that are sitting on top of the deck. We meet and exceed the requirements for drought-tolerant plants, and all of the planting will be drip irrigated with controllers that will control the water to the plantings. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We appear to have no questions. No questions, Mr.?
Just conclude, there is one item that I would like to conclude with.
Okay.
The, the staff recommendation includes some conditions of approval, two of which that I would like to comment on. One of the conditions, recommended conditions of approval was that the fiber cement panels, instead of being textured to smooth face. The other condition of approval is a recommendation for a color study to look at the color selection for the, for the project. Both of those conditions are intended to make the project much more contemporary. I would note that early on in the project, the project owner asked us to execute the project in a traditional residential style, but staff noted that because of the predominance of contemporary buildings along the San Fernando corridor, that contemporary was a more, was a more appropriate architectural style. Ultimately, we were able to convince the owner that a contemporary style was appropriate, with the caveat that we could still make the building look very residential through the selection of appropriate materials and colors. And we are certainly able to, you know, adhere to those conditions of approval, but doing so might require that we abandon the, well, the prerequisite that was given us by the owner to make the building as residential as possible while still executing a contemporary style, which is a difficult design challenge. And that concludes the staff presentation. We are available if any of you have questions.
Yes.
I have comments, not questions.
You have comments? Before you go to your comments. So, there, there are no speaking cards?
There's one.
There's one? It's Mr. Poindexter's card. That's the only one I have. So, yeah, there are no speaking cards. Okay, so apparently there's one individual that liked-
Oh, you can fill the card out later.
Yeah, you can, it's okay, come and speak. And we also have, we also have some letters that have been submitted, and my, my colleagues, I assume, have-
Oh, I haven't seen anything.
Yes, I, we have them.
Yes, we all have copies.
Was that the ones? I thought there were the other-
Opened public hearing?
Yes, so open public hearing.
Okay.
Ma'am?
Hello, I'm Rosalinda Gallegos. I live at 616 South Pacific, so it's directly across the street from where it's proposed. And, family members and residents' friends are the ones that have signed the letters. And there's actually about signatures from everyone that lives in that range, in that neighborhood, in that one block. I can completely recall what Mr. Councilman, Mr. Quintero was saying, of how Glendale has changed, especially in the area where we live. Like I've told you, I've been there 43 years, ever since I was born. And, it saddens me to walk through Riverdale, through Maple, and see where there was one single-family homes, and there is apartment complexes. Most of them are two-story apartment complexes, some of them are three, but what they're asking, we understand that something needs to be built, because there was originally two homes that were there. One was destroyed by a fire, the other was demolished. And it saddened me to lose Yvonne, who had to go live in an elderly home because she was in financial need, and the, the person that bought it convinced her to, to sell her house. Requesting a five-story building just does not go with what we already have on Pacific. Yes, there are apartments there, but the apartments that are there are two stories. The, the biggest apartment with units is an eight-unit apartment. There is one eight-unit, one five-unit, one three-unit, a single, a single-family home on the side where they're proposing to build. Across the street, there are three single-family homes, two on the corners that are actually facing Maple and Riverdale. So, we ask you, I know that they're saying they have you. Now, with the building of the social services, they've already taken our view, they've taken our view away from Griffith Park. What is little, what is, the little that is left from the Los Feliz and the- The little that is left from the last feel is in the Griffith Park area downtown LA will be taken away when they build this building that they're proposing. They're all facing Los Angeles, because they know, and they've shaped it in a U, because it has a beautiful view. But what happens to us that have been living there for many years? We don't have that view anymore. Before, I was able to sit on the outside of my house when I was a young child, and I can actually see the cross and the star at Forest Lawn. I can no longer do that. I teach at Edison Elementary. The children at this school during recess, when it was rainy days or snow, I'm sorry, not rainy days, but when it would snow, we would look to our side, and we would see the Verdugo Mountains. We no longer can see the Verdugo Mountains. All we see is buildings. They have balconies that are directly going to be affecting the neighbors that are right to their, at 617 South Pacific. We already have an invasion of our privacy. We are daily, people that go to the social services office are parking on our street at Pacific. They're leaving their trash. They're sitting in cars. They're staring, and you walk by, and it's scary. Things have been vandalized. People's bikes, we used to be able to leave them on our sides in our yards, and they have been stolen. Patio chairs that have been left have been stolen, and that wasn't the case before. We are asking, we're actually pleading, to please do not allow for the construction of 27 units. We understand that something needs to be built, but can you please keep it within the way that things are now, maybe a two-story buildings? Because we were used to two single-family homes, and now 27 units, five stories? Please take into consideration the letters. Many of the people that have signed them have lived there for many years. We have residents, my parents have lived there for more than 40 years. We have other residents...
Madam, I've allowed you to speak over four minutes. I just want to ask you to conclude.
They are not present because they do not feel comfortable speaking in English. They only speak Spanish. So, please, listen to their concerns that they were posted in the letter, and keep it into consideration, please.
Thank you, certainly will. Yes?
So...
If there are no... I'm going to close. Yeah, we're going to close public hearings, so...
This is a design review hearing. I think that all of our neighborhoods deserve excellence in design, and with no ill will towards the architect, who I don't know, I'm going to be honest, because it's late, we've been at it a long time, I don't find this building to be excellent in design. I find it to be, I mean honestly, banal and confused. I think you can certainly do contemporary, that feels residential. This building does not feel residential to me. I just don't think it's up to the standards that we expect in the city, so I'm going to vote no on this design. Oh, one other thing. The only reason I'm assuming we're hearing this is because it's in the former San Fernando redevelopment area?
That's correct.
Okay, so there is no more San Fernando redevelopment area. I can see the case for having buildings in the DSP come to city council. I mean, I can see the argument. I don't see the argument for the buildings in this area. And that includes the last project that we saw come to us for our design hearings, when we are not, we have a board made up of design experts. I feel more comfortable with these projects going to them than to us. Not a discussion for today, but it's something that I think we should look at. We don't have that project area anymore. I don't know why these projects, like anything else in the city, aren't going to the design review board.
If that's the desire of the council, we can bring a zoning code amendment to change the review authority.
I'd like to hear the pros and cons of doing that.
If that's the desire of the council, we could, by all means, schedule that to come to council for discussion in the future. And with regard to this project, if the council decides to ask to return for redesign, we would appreciate some direction as to what specifically you would like to see addressed by the design studio staff.
I have a question, too.
Being banal, I'm sorry.
I know. I would just say...
Being banal does not give us much to work with.
To me, it's a very plain facade, without a lot of relief, property line to property line. It doesn't make sense to me. I don't understand what it's trying to say. Even the colors, mint and peach, I just don't think it's a... I mean, it's just very flat. That element, I just think, is kind of stuck on.
I think Mr. Lewis is going to say why.
Well, I think on the recommending approval, as you saw, there is a condition about revisiting the colors, as well as the finish of the siding, addressing a particular concern you said regarding color palette and the... We share that concern, that's why it's one of the conditions. In regards to the overall enassing of the project, as the applicant indicated, 24, sounds about right in terms of the number of iterations we saw. This project, I think, started out looking very similar to the first version of the Colorado project you saw when it was first presented. And we've worked many sessions with them, sometimes fairly heated and direct, to say their original scheme was not appropriate. They've opened up the courtyard. Originally, that was a totally enclosed courtyard. They've added the roof deck, so they've made a number of modifications to the project to try and address the enassing concerns. And again, operating within the confines of what's permitted by their zoning.
I just don't, I mean, to me, it's just, it's not an attractive building. It just, it doesn't look like a high-quality building to me, or high-quality design, in materials, in what it's trying to say, which I, it's trying to say, let's put as much in here as we can, and let's slap something on the front and see if that works. I, sorry, I'm just, I'm not seeing it. Having to do 24 iterations, I don't know that that's a positive thing. They came in in such a place where, you know, it wasn't acceptable. Just because they've gone to a certain place doesn't mean it's where it needs to be either. So, sorry, I can't support it.
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
In this whole sector, is there any other building of the height that this has proposed?
The county social services...
Other than the DPSs building? Any? In this whole area?
Well, I think the county social services building is the largest building in their parking structure.
But in terms of residential, whatever, there's nothing this size. So, this would start a new precedence, in essence. The way it's zoned, there's going to be others going to look at this one and then want to build this height all along there.
Yeah, and as you could see on the aerials or the site photos, the buildings directly north that go up Pacific are currently, although they're within the current IMUR zoning, they are by and large two-story apartment buildings.
Two stories, three stories max.
Sometimes there is what appears to be an old one-story home, originally a single-family home with maybe two units that have been added in the backyard.
And to go from two-story to this, that's quite a jump.
Anything else? No? Mr. Quintero?
I agree. I think it's a little too massive. I think the idea of doing condominiums there is probably a good idea. It's right around the corner from the park, near the pool, school, et cetera. It's kind of part of the San Fernando Road zone, but it is pretty massive.
Mr. Najarian?
Well, news flash, I can live with this, and I can tell you why, very concretely. Number one, these are homeownership. These are condos. After 3,000 units of apartments have been built or proposed, more than 3,000, this is the first developer that comes in with the opportunity for homeownership. That's its first plus. The second plus, these are large units. These are units that are going to bring in families, and the vast majority of all those 3,000-plus units were not family conducive. They were singles. They were one-bedrooms. There appears to be an effort to push families out of Glendale by the type of unit mix that we're providing. We need to immediately reverse that and start to encourage families moving in and families owning. And to the lady that has concerns with the neighborhood, I think having neighbors that have a stake in the neighborhood, that are going to care about that Cheetos wrapper on the ground, or that strange guy walking up and down the street, because I know that social service, we have calls from there, believe me, we know what's going on there. These folks in this building are going to be extra eyes and ears helping you. The other very important thing for me is, this has a neg deck, correct? Neg deck means took all the wind out of my sails, right? If the previous project was a neg deck, I would have nothing to say, but this means that the impacts are not significant.
Correct.
They don't need any mitigation.
Correct.
It's a big thing for me, if you've been watching. And the last is, I think the efforts, 24 iterations of this with design staff, that's a huge effort to put through. I would, I don't know, encourage my colleagues to take some sort of solace in that, in those efforts. And, you know, if it's a color that can be adjusted, or a finish, to give them the benefit of the doubt and let this thing, let this thing go, let it be approved.
And I agree with Mr. Najarian. I think this will, if anything, this is going to improve the neighborhoods, clean it up, make it attractive. And in terms of the size of the building, you know, the DPSs building, really, if you look at it from San Fernando, it looks like two five-story buildings. There are really two five-story buildings. So, it's not, something's not going to start a trend there. The trend started when those DPSs buildings went up. If anything, an addition of a building of the same size is going to make more sense. It's going to complement the DPSs buildings, because that corner will shape up as, you know, a corner that's not deprived of buildings. So, home sizes, the sizes of the units, very important. I always ask, how size are the units? How large are the units? These units are large. They're clearly meant for families. Very important for me. And we haven't had, you're right, Mr. Najarian, we haven't had anything of that size built...
It's been all apartments.
Yeah, forever.
Well, can I ask staff a question?
Of course, please go ahead.
I mean, I think you hear my concerns. Do you think that with your requirements, that you can make this building be more of an excellent building? I mean, do you feel, do you hear what I'm saying? Is that making any sense?
Yeah, we do hear what you're saying, and I believe with the two...
Because I don't have a problem with having condos. I don't have a problem with, you know, the things that Mr. Najarian said I think are a plus. I think having homeownership in this area is important. I just want a really good-looking building there, and I'm not sure this is there yet. Do you think you can get it there if we approve this?
I believe that the design studio staff can work with the two conditions that they have recommended, and we can work with the applicant to change the materials and really improve the building considerably.
So, there are four conditions, actually?
That's right, yes.
And is the owner willing to work with...
It's four conditions, I'm sorry.
To make a real, because you're selling these. You want a really good-looking building, correct? I don't think you're there yet. I mean, I think you want something that people are going to drive by and go, wow, I want to live in that building. And I would think that you'd want that.
They always want you to...
Okay, no, that's okay. I got an answer, so...
Well, look, specifically for me, the north elevation, I mean, that just goes straight up. Whatever happened to stepping it back?
Because, well, the north elevation will be adjacent to other projects that will be built right there up to the property line.
Yeah, but currently, no, no, the north, as you go down Pacific, it's on your left. The north elevation, I mean, there are currently single-family homes there, and you've got this tall structure straight up in the air. I mean, we've stepped, there have been multiple projects that have stepped away from smaller single-family type of homes.
Except that they're not single-family zones. This whole block was rezoned by council deliberately to, you know, so then future development will not be a single-family home there.
Right, but that may be years and years from now. I mean, I like this courtyard that they created to the south. I think that works well, but the north elevation is pretty drastic.
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Don't make any mistake. When I first evaluated, homeownership was so important, the size of units was good, the location was good for this kind of a project, all that is good. What I'm wrestling with is the height, that height. And I assume if it's a couple stories less, it would go on the economics again. You can't build anything on his former single-story lot. I don't know, but that bothers me more than anything, I think.
Well, let me just say, the zoning that we, the height that's allowed in this zoning is just a transformation, the same height that was allowed prior to this by industrial zoning. So, when you re-zoned this, you did not increase the height. We, in fact, in some cases, we decreased the height limits that we are allowing at this point. This was an industrially zoned area prior to this, and at that point, the height was the same or more. So, this is simply an iteration of the same height that would have been otherwise an industrial building.
So, your guess is that eventually this whole zone will have buildings of this height?
Yes, that is our guess, and that was the intent of the San Fernando Road corridor rezoning at the time you considered the zoning.
Which I voted for.
You voted for, yes. And again, this height was always allowed in this area.
Now, across the street, on the east side, what's the maximum height on the east side?
Pardon me, sir?
On the east side of the street at Pacific, what's the maximum height?
The east side of the street is actually zoned, I believe, R2250, which would allow two stories by right. And if you have a lot that is 90 feet in width minimum, then you would be allowed up to three stories. So, they would be allowed up to three stories. This particular zone, in the IMUR zone, allows six stories up to 75 feet in height, and so this building is...
So, there we go. Just like the Colorado, there's a break between residential and the other zones, and they always conflict somewhere. They happen to happen on Pacific, the east side and the west side, short on the east, tall on the west.
And on a going-forward basis, we've agendized this issue, general issue, for discussion, but in terms of retroactively, in terms of, you know, being fair to people who think Glendale want to do something here...
I understand.
Yeah.
But we're going to agendize the downtown specific plan. That's a whole other animal. This is the San Fernando corridor, which I voted for.
Okay, so I think, folks, it's 6:05. Our evening session should have started five minutes ago. Still, we haven't even gone...
Can you do something to that north elevation to try to soften it or something?
Yeah, expense the square footage of the units.
Correct. Now, there are four suggested conditions of approval. Mr. Quintero, we'd be more than happy to go ahead and add a fifth condition of approval to, I'm going to leave it to our urban designer to actually draft the language, but it would be something along the lines of consider or modify the north elevation to add articulation and a little bit more, would you like setback? Because I know on the upper floor, it actually, that fourth floor, was specifically removed at that corner in order to provide that outdoor space and to provide that transition downward to the neighborhood to the north. So, if you'd just like to add, and I take it, this is just a facade change as opposed to enassing change? Is that correct?
Well, to me, it's about enassing, though. To me, if you have this effect, I think it's going to work much better for the neighborhood in general.
You know what's so unique about this one? Over the years, 18 years here, any project been proposed, the developers came in and met with council members to get their feel. There's many times I didn't like what I saw, and I went back. This one, it hit me cold. I saw it Friday, so if I'm giving input now, you know, like enassing or stuff, it's kind of late. I have to take it or leave it.
Well, you know, we apologize for that. Please do not take that on the applicant. If staff, if you would really request that staff bring every project to you on a one-on-one in the future, if they do not have hired, if they haven't hired a lobbyist, we will be happy to do that on our own, but please do not use that against the applicant in this.
Mr. Gani, I'm just making a point. What has been a pattern over many, many years, to show it, this hit me cold on Friday. The art studio or whatever has looked at it, and here it is. If I want to have input, if I want to say it was too tall, or if I wanted articulation, I've had no chance. To try to put that on them now, that's not fair to them. You know, I either take it or leave it.
Yes, Mr. Quintero?
The south-facing, this courtyard facing south, I mean, that's tremendous design. That works for everybody. I'm actually thinking in the future, there's more of a chance that this building to the south is going to be developed into something high, and then that courtyard's going to have...
Exactly.
Not going to have anything going for it. If it was reversed and that courtyard faced north, you have northern light, number one, but second, I think it works better with...
But of course, there could be same-story buildings on the north side of that. But of course, there could be same-story buildings on the north side eventually, so you can't win.
Yes, Mr. Najarian?
I'm getting ready to pass out, but I would like to make a motion, a series of motions. I'd like to move the resolution to certify the negative declaration.
I'll second that part.
I'd like to move the approval of the CUP.
Wait, you have to do the neg deck.
I know, and then separately?
You can move those two together if you want.
How about...
That's a change.
How about the design issues?
Well, I would suggest you...
Hold that. Okay, so I'll move one and three. Three, well, it's three A and C, whatever.
You introduce the ordinance. Are you introducing the ordinance?
There's no ordinance.
Oh, wait, I'm up. Nope, one up. We took out the last one. I'm looking...
Do we have a second on both?
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmembers Friedman...
Yes.
Najarian...
Yes.
Montero...
Yes.
Weaver...
Hi.
Marison Ayen...
Yes.
And then for the approval of the design stage one and two, there are four conditions?
Comments and conditions?
Then why don't we make the suggestion to move the courtyard a recommendation or a consideration?
Consideration would be...
So that if they decide to, they don't have to come back to us.
Right, thanks.
With the, I'd move it with the conditions stated earlier. Are those clear as to what...
That's right. The four conditions plus consider turning the courtyard in the other direction if it's feasible with staff.
I'll move that.
I may just say one thing. We're very happy to have homeownership in Glendale.
Yes, we are. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Do we have a second? Which translates into families, yes.
We'll go with him.
I'll second it.
Q. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman...
Yes.
Najarian...
Yes.
Montero...
Yes.
Weaver...
Hi.
Marison Ayen...
Yes.
Someone move to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
We adjourned.
Close session.
Close session.